Welcome. The meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. Will we all please rise and follow Commissioner?
Where's the flag?
You're gonna have a flag.
We have no flags.
It was over here. It was over there.
Oh, those are commissioners.
Wow.
That's a new one.
We'll follow Commissioner Owens to our virtual flag. How's that?
Let's just skip this part up. They do it at the Dodger game.
Please repeat that for me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a first.
Okay, well, that was interesting. We're off to a good start. Yes, virtual. Yes. Will the Secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Owens?
Present.
Commissioner Ferretta?
Present.
Commissioner Spathopoulos?
Present.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Present.
And Chair Dominguez?
Present.
Will those in attendance please read the cover page of the agenda as it outlines procedures which the commission will follow? This is time set aside for all communications for the Planning Commission. Does any commissioner wish to express announcement or report in conference or a meeting or request items for a future agenda? Commissioner Ferretta?
No.
Commissioner Owens?
I have none. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
I have none. Thank you.
And Commissioner Spath?
None. Thank you.
Okay. And I have none likewise. Is the Director of Community Development aware of any presentations for tonight?
Chair Dominguez, no presentations for tonight.
Does the Director of Community Development have any changes to the agenda?
Chair, no changes to tonight's agenda.
Does the Director of Community Development have a report on City Council actions?
Chair, I do. At last night's City Council meeting, the City Council approved their annual community development block grant and home federal application for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those programs provide a lot of funding for our social services and home rehabilitation services in our community. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Now is a time set aside for public hearings. Public hearing for PLN-19-00061 is now open. Does the Secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Will the Director of Community Development and his staff make in the presentation?
Thank you, Chair Dominguez. Tonight, we have our Principal Planner Guillermo Ariola to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Excuse me. Bastards American Canteen is requesting approval of a special event permit for a Memorial Day event to take place May 27, 2019, and located at 11045 Downey Avenue, zoned downtown Downey, specific plan. This application is the same as last year's. No difference. Again, take place on May 27th. Excuse me. From noon till 10:00 p.m. Again, same hours, and will include partial closure of Second Street between New Avenue and Downey Avenue. Written approvals have been obtained from the surrounding property owners for the closure of this street. The aerial here shows that there will be K rails, jersey barriers at New and Downey Avenue prohibiting vehicles from entering the site during the event. There'll be perimeter crowd control fencing located around the event. Stage setup will take place. Excuse me. Sorry. A stage will be set up on Second Avenue where live entertainment will take place from noon to 8:00 p.m. The event will include a number of vendors as well as a beer garden and beer trailer. Oh, thank you very much. I'm a little under the weather, so please forgive me for that. Entry to the port, the beer garden area, the beer trailer, also known as a beer garden, excuse me, will be limited to those people 21 years of age and older, and it will also be fenced off from the remaining portion of the event with the crowd control barrier right there. There'll be a security guard posted at the entrance checking IDs and handing out colored wristbands. Sale and consumption of beer will be limited to the beer garden area. A total of six security guards will be stationed throughout the event. Setup for the parking lot area will begin Sunday, May 26 at noon, and that is this area right there. A street closure and setup will begin Monday at 6:00 a.m. This area right there. Event breakdown and the opening of the street will be completed by midnight, and remaining cleanup activities will be completed by Tuesday at noon. Excuse me. At the May 2nd DRC meeting, we got the standard conditions of approval from the different departments, planning, building, public works, police. However, due to some unruly behavior at last year's event, the Police Department is requiring two police officers from 5:00 p.m. to the close of the event. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ariola. Hope you feel better soon, but I've got about 50 questions for you. I hope you'll survive.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a joke.
Thank you.
He isn't feeling well.
I was ready.
I know you were. That's why I said it jokingly. You mentioned the unru-
Was? Yes, there was a few intoxicated individuals that took place later on in the evening, and so that's why Police Department wants two police officers. They just feel that their presence would definitely impact that type of behavior and reduce it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Ferretta, do you have any questions?
The setup is pretty much the same as the one from last year, correct?
There's no change, sir.
Okay. That's familiar. So, other than the altercation that they had, there was no other issues?
No, sir.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Spathos?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens?
None either. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Duarte?
Just one. In terms of the, I see here in the application that they have written permission from Portos, Lock &amp; Key, Peking, and LA Bun, the tenants, how about the Epic Lounge? Would they be operating that night?
LA Bun's?
No, Epic Lounge.
Epic Lounge.
Yeah.
Yes, they got a permission from all the property owners.
Okay, because, yeah, that was, I didn't see that.
More importantly, if I may, Portos owns half that street as does the owner of the Bastards property, and so primary approval was obtained from Portos in order to allow them to close the street. No Portos approval, no closure of street, and because they're closed on Memorial Day, they were fine with the closure.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Before I call the applicant and his/her representative, this will be the time for any Planning Commissioner to disclose any pre-hearing site visits or pre-hearing discussions that Commissioners may have had about the project. Commissioner Spathos?
Site visits, yes. I have driven by, familiar with the location, and know that they have had this event in the past, but no communications with any of the applicants.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferretta?
No communication or site visit.
Commissioner Owens? Sorry, thank you. Commissioner Owens?
None as well, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
No disclosures.
No disclosures for me either. Now, we'll invite the applicant and/or his/her representative to come forward to give testimony. Please clearly state your name and address, sir.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, good evening. My name is Manny Maeda. I'm the co-owner of Bastards American Canteen, located on 11045 Downey Avenue, and first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak on behalf of our event on May 27. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ferretta, any questions?
Not at this moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Spathos?
No questions. I like the addition of the, to additional police officers, and I'm sure you guys will do a good job keeping everybody.
Well, I do. Thank you, sir.
We're all. Commissioner Owens?
No questions, but just a comment as well. Terrific event.
Appreciate that, sir.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
Great event. I guess the only question I have is in regards to the situation last year. Was that, have you thought about what happened? Any procedure, any extra procedure that you're going to implement this time so you won't have any of that unruly behavior?
Absolutely. Our SOPs are super tight during our events. This is the first event that we bring on, you know, local police officers throughout the duration of the event, not only from 5:00 to closing, but actually throughout the beginning of the event to the closing of the event. We think it's very important to definitely show that presence. In accordance of last year's event, during Veterans Day, not Memorial Day, is when the altercation happened, it was individuals that were at our event, then left our event, and went to a different place. There was, you know, an altercation between two people, and that did not escalate to anything further than, you know, local Police Department stopping by, you know, doing what they were supposed to do, did a very good job, came back to us and informed us that these two individuals were part of our event. At that point, we then got together, as far as the Planning Committee for this event, said that definitely our SOPs inside the beer garden had to be a lot more strict, so we went ahead and upped on our security, and with now being more space because of the street, we can control as far as crowd control a lot better, along with being able to, you know, facilitate beer sales in one area and non-beer sales in the other area where it's purely entertainment, and again, more space, more security guards, and now two armed police officers is going to definitely set that presence and, you know, be able to, you know, hold that SOP a lot more responsible for.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mark, it's us to you.
Thank you, sir.
Has there been any correspondence, either in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir. Has there been any correspondence, either in favor or opposition?
None, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Mr. Dominguez, why such negative behavior here? Why must we have no shirts that shall not be blue or black? Why? Is that racial profiling? Downey Police wear the colors they wear. People of the public, people of security, should wear what they wear. It's an event. This concern of yours about something that happened a time ago doesn't mean it's going to happen again. Bastards American Canteen has successfully participated in this event over and over for as long as I can remember, which is about four and a half years since I've been here, since the City of L.A. put their threat management and their TRO on my ass. But you shouldn't be so anal on the ass of the bastards, because all they're doing is celebrating what vets and what memorial holidays are all about. So, again, we all know that under the age of 21 prohibits drinking. You got an elected official from City of Los Angeles, Jose Weza, who had a DUI, an elected official at the capacity of a moron, drinking and driving, but yet people from the Bastards Cantina don't do that. And just because there was this little issue during one event doesn't mean you have to lock down on Bastards Cantina, let alone don't suppress the public to access Bastards because you use law enforcement to engage in retaliation and suppress people from an event that can be happy. Or should we all go in hoods and make sure you know the difference between people of the public or people that are the police at 562-904-2301, Downey Police Department, for the record? I just spoke to the watch commander, Mr. Kelly. I made a request for additional policing south of here. What did he say? He said, "Just call when the problem is happening." So, why can't we do the same at Bastards? Why do you want a racial profile and stand guard over the public at a public event? That's discrimination. I don't even want to go now, because I feel I will be targeted by discrimination, and you know that, Duarte. You know that. Don't let this happen, Duarte, and not under our watch. Bastards Cantina is a wonderful cantina. I sit there and have my drinks outside with no problems, yet the Threat Management Unit of the Los Angeles Police Department has put an X on my back, telling me that I have to stay 10 yards from an elected person from the City of Los Angeles under Mike Fuhr, the city attorney, simply because I said he lives in Pasadena. If you don't want to be known, if you don't want to get recognition, and you don't want to have First Amendment protection, stay off Facebook, stay off Twitter, and stay the fuck off of putting your name on a poster and posting it that this is what you do and you have your address on it. That's how stupid this attorney is from Pasadena. But yet he goes to my city in Los Angeles where I'm employed, and he fucks with us. So, again, watch how you control the environment. Watch how you control our social activities in our community. Not everyone's a fool, except the city attorney who works for Mike Fuhr's office. So, take back those restrictions by the police. Tell the police they will be out there when there's a call. I come in and make a request to watch commander, and he says, "Make a call. We'll get out there when we can, as it is not an emergency." Well, fuck you. Gentlemen sleeping in the back of my home homeless was there this morning at 4:00 a.m. while my dogs were barking. It's not his fault. Being homeless is not his fault. Being homeless is a crisis, and it's a poor excuse of the American dream. So, stop being a bully. That's what you are, bullies. Fix the promenade and get shit working.
I apologize to the audience. We're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back on clock. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, either in favor or in opposition of this Does the applicant care for rebuttal time? Does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 19-3089 approving the special event permit, PLN 19-00061.
Thank you. The hearing on PLN-19-00061 is now closed. Does the commission wish to discuss this? Commissioner Ferretta? I'm sorry, Ferretta?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Spathos?
I'll discuss.
Commissioner Owens?
None. I support this event.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
I also support the event, and I, you know, I like the addition of two officers. So, I'm in support.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ferretta. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Vice Chairman Duarte.
Vote is now open. Please place your votes.
We have a problem.
The old-fashioned way?
It's not showing up, Mary.
It was working all day.
Should we go to voice vote?
We can take a voice vote.
Okay, voice vote.
Take two voice votes.
So, may I have a?
I have an approval.
That would be a motion to, that would be a motion to approve the staff's recommendation approving the special event permit.
And we need a resolution number, I would assume?
Yeah, resolution number.
PLN-19-0061?
19-3-
19-3089.
Very good.
Okay. May I have your vote, please?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
We had a motion and a second.
Did you get that, Mary? Yes? Very good.
Ferretta?
Approve.
Yes.
Owens?
Aye.
Duarte?
Aye.
An aye for me.
Okay. Set it. In favor? Okay, the motion passes to approve PLN-19-00061 for the special event permit with all five in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to PLN-19-0063. Please introduce the staff.
Yes, thank you. Chair Dominguez, tonight, we have, once again, our Principal Planner Guillermo Ariola to
Sir Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, before your application for a special event, St. George Greek Orthodox Church is requesting approval of a special event permit to hold the Downey Greek Festival on June 1st and 2nd. The property is located at 10830 Downey Avenue and zoned downtown Downey, specific plan. The times of the event will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday. Again, this application is just like last year's, will include live music, entertainment, a stage. This is a picture of the parking lot where the event is going to be taking place. It will include a dance floor, games, vendors, food and beverage area, and a seating area. Setup for the event will take place on Thursday and Friday, May 30, 31, and cleanup will begin Monday, June 3, and completed by Tuesday, June 4, by 6:00 p.m. Mitigation measures have been included that require all speakers to face away from the residential areas next door, and any generators, if any, to be at least 25 feet away from any residential property lane. The applicant has indicated no mechanical rights. First Baptist Church and Downey United Methodist Church have given the applicant permission to use their parking lots for event parking, and the slide before you shows the locations of those parking locations. The different departments provided comments on this event, and like last year, they provide their standard conditions of approval. No changes to their conditions. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Good presentation. So, last year, we made some changes on, were placement of some of the activities. Were, are we doing the same thing with those activities, or has there been a change from last year?
There were no requested changes to the activities for this year's event.
Those same stations?
Yes.
This year as last year, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ferretta?
Same setup as last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Nope. No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Spathos?
No questions.
Commissioner Owens?
None, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
Were there any reported incidents occurring during the festival last year?
None. No noise or any type of complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Before I call the applicant and/or his representative, this will be the time for any Planning Commissioners to disclose any pre-hearing site visits or pre-hearing discussions that the Commissioners would like to divulge. Commissioner Spathos?
I have visited the site. Have attended many years myself. Other than that, nothing to discuss.
Commissioner Ferretta?
I actually attended it last year and very familiar with the event, very good event. I have no questions.
Disclosures?
No disclosures.
Okay. Commissioner Owens?
Same. I attend it regularly, and I have no disclosures. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for me. Will the applicant and/or his representative please come forward to give testimony?
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, Planning Commissioners, staff. Thank you for inviting, having me come here and present to everyone. As Mr. Ariola indicated, there are no changes from last year. There were some requests that were made, and we were always very flexible working with the city. You know, we still have to obtain fire permits, building permits, electrical permits, so sometimes there are modifications that are made within, you know, with the city departments, and we always work it out. You know, in years past, before I was here, we worked it out the day before the festival, but we worked it out, and, you know, as I've been a part of this process, it's happened a couple weeks, a month before, and so I'd like to thank Mr. Arielo, sorry, Guillermo. I'm going to call him Guillermo. I like his first name, for working on this. I know it was submitted with a bunch of other things that he had going on, and he, you know, welcomed the challenge, and so I'd like to thank him and staff for doing this. I'm open to any questions and any concerns the Planning Commissioners may have. Hopefully, I can address them.
Commissioner Ferretta?
I have no questions. Great event.
Commissioner Spathos?
I have a question. Maybe you could help me. What year is this? Do you know what year this is that the community has been doing the Downey Greek Festival? Because maybe 50. I should know, but I don't.
It's 35.
You know, it's, it's, it's between 30 and 35. There, it's like one of those things, like when did the world begin? Kind of people don't know when it started, because when this, when this community began. It's like 34th or 35th. It's, I believe it's 34th.
Okay. Good to know.
Commissioner Owens?
Sure. Sure, just a comment, I think last year we batted around a little bit the Friday, you know, still good with just Saturday, Sunday, not interested in going back to Friday at any point.
You know, I'd love to have a Friday, the difficulty is, we're a very heavy volunteer-based festival. Other festivals, other, you know, special events that are like ours, they rely heavily on paid help, paid, you know, labor, quite honestly, and, you know, when we had the three-day event, honestly, we couldn't walk the next day as volunteers, right? So, there's that challenge and obviously it creates some challenges with staff because, you know, they have to get things ready before Friday, and so we batted it around, but it might make an appearance next year and the next couple of years. I mean, it's something we're considering, we like the three-day thing, the idea of it, but it's, hopefully it'll happen sooner than later.
Yeah, you're at max capacity Saturday and Sunday, so your ability to make revenue is pretty strong, but, thank you.
If I may make a suggestion, if you come before 3 o'clock, you tend to beat the lines. There tends to be heavy, heavy flow of people after 3 o'clock, or heavier than normal, so if you want to, you know, get food and enjoy it and not be, you know, succumb by the long lines, I would recommend coming before 3 o'clock, 3:00 p.m. You'll beat the line and you'll be able to, you know, enjoy the festival and the music and the people.
Great, thank you.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
I think my comment, same as last year, is, you know, make sure you don't run out of lamb. That's my one complaint. That's my one comment.
I will have to sit you down with a lamb chair and convince him...
We'll have to bring him in next time.
Well, I'm going to tell him that the Commissioners wanted to speak to him and you'll get a kick out of it, he'll address your issues.
Counselor, I appreciate you being here tonight. I think that tonight's presentation by you and the work that your internal staff has done with the Planning Department this year is exemplary. I certainly am proud to sit here tonight and say that the improvement, the growth from your organization, working with our department is what we want here. As a Counselor, you know, process is very important for us, in any organization, but especially a governmental organization, and I appreciate the respect that you have demonstrated as your organization this year for us, not that you disrespected us last year, but it was difficult. Thank you again very much, sir, wish you much success.
Thank you for the comments, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Anything else?
No, sir, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Has there been any correspondents either in favor or in opposition?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? Before we proceed, I'd like to make sure that everybody understands that this is a governmental body, we like, respect, we give respect back. Respect is defined in many different regards, this is a forum, but we follow the Constitution, so we must be tolerant of certain denegrations or variations thereof, but I ask everybody in this audience to please show restraint and respect.
Brown Act 54950 slash 54963, I believe there's a portion in there, Mr. Dominguez, that says the public has a right to criticize its elected official at their capacity. So, Dean Ferguson, Ninth Circuit Court ruled that First Amendment is protected speech, and we must learn to tolerate how the public, who is not informed, who is not required to follow legislative rules other than to be a part of the legislative policy, shall make decisions based on the rules of the legislative law, California Brown Act, Bagley Keen Act. So, let me perform. Thank you. Isn't it great how the St. George Greek Orthodox Church, followed by the Methodist Church, can work together and collaborate parking arrangements? That's great. Most religions don't get together like this anymore. They want to take your parishers away. But it's always been a pleasant event for myself to go to the Greek Orthodox Festival. I enjoy it. I get a high off of it, seeing the love, the respect, and the care the Orthodox people give to each other and in return to those of us who are invited. So, I'm in here to support and be in favor, Mr. Dominguez. What a kicker, huh? What a kicker. And Guillermo, you do always a great job to support the Orthodox Church, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that there's a consideration about people with disabilities, for handicapped stalls in the parking area must remain accessible for all uses, for those with disabilities and those without. First come, first served. In addition to that, Mr. Dominguez, why isn't there a Downey police officer or two on guard at this site? There's been some bombing going on in the churches, retaliation for those who oppose to the belief that God is invisible, which he is. We all have an opinion to our God, we all respect each other's God, but at the end we come to the demise of one Creator. Brought to you by the Book of Romans, which I heard yesterday in the meeting. But Christ taught the Pharisees a lesson. He said, "Take these money changers and these scales off the temple of God, for this is the house of my Father." What did he mean by that? I think he was implying that he being a God, the Son of God, made it known that he's the Son of God. However, to some who do not know that, because they believe in a trinity dad or they believe in other philosophies, or pagan philosophies, see, the longer I'm in the community and I have a library to read and learn, the more accountable I become to understand life, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez, for that recess call on 42 U.S.C. 1983. Because you're implying with all respect that you're going to observe the First Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, and follow constitutional Bill of Rights law that protects the civility of what the Brown Act is intended to do, move the public to participate. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid here because you don't know what to say, because we know what to say. We live in our community, we celebrate in God's house, but sometimes there's a defector like the Catholic Church who allowed Jose Weisler, an elected official from Los Angeles, to money laundering through the Catholic Church as Sallesian Bishop Amont, and now the FBI is on his ass.
The intent of this exercise at this point in time is to allow the public to come forth and give public comment that's pertinent to the item at hand. Our tolerance is being tested. Is there anyone else who would like to come forth and give testimony, either in favor or in opposition? Would the applicant like to rebut? Does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 19-3090 approving special event permit number PLN 19-00063.
Thank you, sir. The hearing on PLN-19-0063 is now closed. Now it's time for the Commission to ask questions or we have a general discussion. Commissioner Spathos?
No comment, I think we're all looking forward to the event, make sure not to eat a couple of days before. Other than that, no questions, no further comments.
Commissioner Fermetta?
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Owens?
As well as my fellow Commissioners stated, I'm looking forward to the event and I, for the sake of Commissioner Duarte, the lamb should not run out.
And Vice Chairman Duarte?
No, I'm in favor of it, but thank you, Commissioner Owens.
What is the pleasure of the Planning Commission? May I have a first motion?
Motion.
First motion by Commissioner Fermetta, second please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Owens.
Commissioners, due to technical difficulties, we're going to have an audible vote tonight.
Very well.
The motion passes to adopt Resolution 19-3090 in favor of PLN 19-00063. Did we take a vote? We get a motion and a second, please call the...
Roll call.
Roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you voted, okay.
Before we announce a vote, let's get the vote.
Do we have a vote?
We have a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Now the motion passes for 19-3090 with Commissioner Fermetta and motioning, and Commissioner Owens seconding in favor, five in favor.
So, it's been approved and seconded to approve this and send this for the recommendation to the City Council, PLN-19-00063. We'll now open number PLN-19-0060. Mr. Schindler, do you have someone on staff that can present?
Yes, Chairman. Yes, Chairman, we have our Assistant Planner Madeline Welch providing the presentation for tonight.
Good evening, Chairman Dominguez and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight you're being asked to consider a special event proposal for Circus Vargas at the Stonewood Center. This will be the first circus in the city of Downey, and it is proposed at 251 Stonewood Street, also commonly known as Stonewood Center. Circus Vargas has and will have events in Woodland Hills, Chino Hills, Laguna Hills, and Santa Barbara, and please note that the applicant is aware that they are moving forward at their own risk, depending on the decision of the Commission. The event will take place from Thursday, May 16th to Monday, May 27th of 2019, and the site is zoned SP 89-1, which is the Stonewood Specific Plan. The surrounding uses include single-family residential to the north, multifamily residential to the east, a Toyota dealership to the south, and CP to the west. The circus site is located on the southeast portion of the parking lot at the Stonewood Center along Firestone Boulevard, right down here, with Woodruff Avenue being on the east. The municipal code states that special events involving over 500 people shall require approval from the Planning Commission, and this event is expecting 300 to 500 attendees per show. On the farthest west side of the Stonewood Center parking lot, there will be 23 sleeping trailers for... There will be 11 performing days with a range of one to three shows per day. Tuesday, May 21st would be the day in between all the performances where there will be none for a break. Setup for the event will begin on Tuesday, May 14th, and cleanup for the event will be complete by Tuesday, May 28th. There will be two entrances onto the circus site, both on the south side of the circus, right here, and the circus includes a 17,000 square foot tent where the show will be held. There will also be food booths with non-alcoholic drinks, there will be merchandise booths and a ticket booth. There are no, there will be no removal of trees for the construction of this event. There will also be 10 portable restrooms for the event, two of them being ADA, and the circus will not include any pyrotechnics, animals, rides, or game of chance. There are seven entrances into the circus performing tent, and generators are placed on the north side of the tent near the main mall of the building, which are right here. Regarding ingress and egress on the site, the primary designating parking will be on the west of the circus tent over here, near Firestone Boulevard to be away from any residential areas. There will also be four ADA parking along Firestone Boulevard near the entrance right here. There will be an attendant that will be located at this entrance along Firestone Boulevard, directing with signage for the event parking. There will also be trash receptacles provided throughout the site with a dumpster as well for disposal of trash after each event. The item was presented to the Development Review Committee on May 2nd, and the other departments had standard conditions of approval for the special events, as well as the Police Department requesting eight uniformed securities on site, inside, outside, and at the ticket booth, for one hour before the show, each show, and then 30 minutes after each show. There will also be, as I mentioned before, the additional traffic attendant on the entrance along Firestone Boulevard to direct traffic. And then, the requested event meets requirements per Downey Municipal and zoning code, and the applicant is not requesting any deviations. That completes my presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Spathos, do you have any questions?
I think some of these questions I'll direct to the applicant directly. They'll probably be able to answer me better. As far as the planning, you mentioned no tree removal?
No.
There aren't islands with trees or anything there?
No.
It's pretty much just parking flat that will be built over, right?
Yes. There were two light posts removed, but that's it.
Temporarily removed?
Correct. They will be replaced right after the event.
Thank you. Are you done? Okay. Commissioner Fermetta?
The barrier or the fence around the circus?
Yes.
What is that material?
The, it will be a five-foot tall chain link fencing, and they'll be putting a blue mesh to match the color of the tent surrounding that.
The fencing around the tent, is it going to have a way of egress? Or are you fenced in?
The primary entrance will be, as it's shown on the slide in front of you, facing Firestone Boulevard. The fire department was there earlier this morning, and they will also be there tomorrow once the fencing has been fully installed to ensure that they're okay with any exiting. Egress is definitely a concern for them, we imagine that they would put it on the northern end to have a secondary, if not a third, point of egress, but the fire department will be on site to ensure that that's provided.
Do we have a plan that we're following, or is this sort of by the seat of our pants?
The fire department has been in constant communication with the event planners for the circus themselves, and they, and before coming in tonight, I spoke with them just to ensure are there any additional concerns that we need to bring to the Commission's attention. The inspector that I spoke with actually did tell me that they felt all of the setup that was being put in, everything that he saw matched the requirements that they would have insisted on anyway.
Chairman, if I may add, I want to direct you to Condition 33, states a fire safety officer, which is city staff, that be paid for by the applicant, shall staff the event's performances to ensure public safety relates to fire hazards, egress, obstructions, remediation of hazard, extinguishment of fires, and assistant evacuation, so that they could assist with any of those items, or more importantly, be proactive so that those activities do not occur.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Chairman Frometa?
Security?
Yes, the security plan. So there will be eight attendants provided by the circus itself, and there will also be, and they'll be uniformed. There will be security inside the tent, outside of the tent, and also near the ticket booth.
The eight security attendants are designated just for the area of the tent, or does that include the trailer area?
It's only for the circus site.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Duarte?
Yes. You know, I'm just a little curious in terms of how staff came up with the location of the actual tent performance, being on the east side next to Raising Canes. Just curious how that location was picked throughout the, the mall.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is actually a second location that was proposed by the circus. Initially, there was another location, but staff had several concerns over the initial location because of its proximity to residential properties abutting the property. This location was selected primarily because it would result in less potential damage to any of the existing trees, the well-established trees throughout all of the parking areas. So this was one of the primary reasons for that location.
And how many actually performers will...
There's forty-four staff members.
Forty-four staff members?
Yeah. That's what we were given.
Okay. And in terms of the sleeping trailers in the tent, during the, during the actual performance, how were they getting back between the tent and the sleeping trailers? Is it, do you know that?
I don't have that answer.
Uh, Mr., uh, sorry. Mr. Chair, if I may, I don't believe that there's gonna be very frequent activity while the events are taking place. There is one trailer that was placed for female performers to do wardrobe changes adjacent to the tent in the fenced area. Other, otherwise, there, there won't be need for, for coming and going between the areas.
And then just, you know, lastly, I think you mentioned a couple of locations where this show will be performing. Is there any, like, recent local places where the Circus Vargas has, has been performed and locally, kind of same type of setup?
Sure. The Circus Vargas, for a nearby location in the city of Lakewood, they have also performed in that location.
The Lakewood Center Mall?
Yes.
And planning commissioners, it's no coincidence, the, the operators of Stonewood is Mace Rich. Mace Rich also owns the Lakewood Mall and the Cerritos Mall, and the reason that Circus Vargas is coming to Stonewood, and I don't want to speak for, for Mace Rich, their representatives are here and may speak to the topic as well, but they've been operating that circus, be it Circus Vargas at that site, successfully for a few years without any issues, and they thought it'd be a good placement over in Downey and Stonewood.
No further questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you very much.
I have one more question. I have one more question.
Please.
You mentioned there's only one traffic controller?
Correct.
You think one traffic controller is sufficient to really control the traffic in possible, what I consider the most, the most traffic or heavy traffic?
Travel.
Travel in, in this mall, is that, this corner?
This location was reviewed by engineering, public works, as well as the circus has suggested in the past that one parking attendant direct, like directing the traffic was sufficient.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, before we go, I think, before we get to the applicant. Just a comment that that particular area has got to be the most dense, heavily trafficked area, probably, I don't want to say in the city, but that part of the mall, driving into, from Firestone, going down that strip next to Olive Garden to the back, is absolutely nuts. There's lines out there, there's people waiting. I'm curious to know, I mean, obviously you want to pick a site that's very busy, but that area has got to be one of the busiest areas, dense-wise, to hold an event like that. So just something that I want to put out there right now, that I personally have some recommendations for the applicants when they come up, just for safety issues.
What are they? Go ahead. Let's discuss that now, because I think this would be a good...
You want to discuss?
I want to discuss this now. What is your comment?
Well, you did mention one traffic.
This is the time for questions only. Then, when the, when the public hearing is closed, then we could talk about some of the recommendations you want to come up with.
So are these questions or recommendations?
Uh, these were comments, actually, on that particular location, leading up to potential recommendations for the applicant when they come up.
I thought there were questions. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Before I call the applicant and/or his representation, this is a time for any planning commissioner to discuss pre-hearing site visits, pre-hearing discussions that you want to disclose. So, Spathos?
Uh, I did visit the location, drove around, familiar with the location, with the spot, just to see what was going on. I saw them putting up the tent a couple of days ago, I think on Tuesday. So time-wise, I think it was a surprise as a commissioner in the city to see the tent going up before we actually held a meeting. So I think that's a discussion to have here today.
Do you have any disclosures, sir?
Just visiting the site.
Thank you. Any disclosures, Commissioner Frometa?
Yes, I visited the site on Monday and as well as last night around nine o'clock. The day before, there was nothing there, and when I went again at nine, there was a tent that was already erected and, and completed.
Thank you, sir. Again, any disclosures, Commissioner Owens?
Uh, no disclosures at this time.
Thank you. Any disclosures, Vice Chairman Duarte?
I have, do have one disclosure. I was contacted by a resident of Downey, Guillermo Urias. He lives at eight five five one Cavill Street. Told me he had two daughters, two and three years old, and he would actually like to take them to the event, so he just let me know that he was in favor of this, this event.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. I have one disclosure.
Yes, sir.
I was contacted by a resident of Downey, Scott Rhodes, not in favor of the circus, because they were from the, the carnival at the Downey High. So I would like to disclose that.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? I have no disclosures. Will the applicant and/or his representative please come forward to give testimony? Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Katia Quiroga. The address is seventy-four fifty-five Arroyo Crossing Parkway in Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one three nine. I'm one of the co-owners of Circus Vargas, together with my husband Nelson. We are a family-owned and operated circus. Circus Vargas is also totally animal-free. We have made it that way more than a decade ago, and Circus Vargas has a reputation of bringing good quality family entertainment to families, and we're proud to be able to bring that to Downey, to the city of Downey. I also want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to bring a family event like Circus Vargas to the city of Downey. We hope to bring many joy to many children, and this being Circus Vargas's fiftieth anniversary, so fifty years coming to communities in California, we really focus on doing good things for the community. So we're not just coming in and just throwing a show. We mind of the quality of the show. We have children on the show. Our children also perform in the show. We are many generations. I'm a seventh generation. My husband, a fourth generation, and our children are eighth-generation circus performers, performing in Circus Vargas. And we're very proud, and we hope to help the community in any ways we can. So every community we come to, we also try to see how we can help the community. In this instance, we were made aware of at the last minute that the high school was having a fundraiser with a carnival, and so we offered to offset any losses that they may have, because our event was at the same days, a few same days. So we're also donating to the school for their fundraiser. We made a donation to them to help them out as well. Here's my husband, if you can speak some.
Well, hello. My name is Nelson Quiroga, as my wife was saying, same address, seven four five five Arroyo Crossing, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one three nine. And together with my wife, as she was mentioning, we took over Circus Vargas about thirteen years ago, and we made what Circus Vargas is today. It has been changed a lot. We've been changing it to a more modern, more theatrical, more family-friendly, and we've been proud parents of three daughters. It's very important to us, and we just want to ask you guys to please give us the opportunity to make Downey one of our yearly stop, just as we do in so many communities around Southern California. I know that for many of you, the event is new, and it's a lot of things that you guys, a lot of questions that you guys may have, so we will be happy to answer all those questions, and hopefully we can convince everybody to, you know, to let us have our show here, not only for us to, you know, to keep this business going, but also to show the community of Downey how circus industry and how the circus family has changed and evolved the last few years.
Okay, we're gonna have some questions for you here. So seems like Chairman, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Spathos has bitten at the bit, so...
Do you want me to start? I'll go ahead.
Yes, sir, please do.
So first question, the tent size you mentioned was seventeen thousand square feet. Your shows, she mentioned, were, you were expecting five hundred people. What's the capacity of the tent?
The tent capacity is one thousand two hundred and fifty.
And if it's, is that just what you're expecting, five hundred, or do you expect sell-out shows like Friday or Saturday?
Usually, usually opening night will be our biggest night. It will be between seven hundred to eight hundred, we're hoping, seven hundred to eight hundred people in the tent. Usually that's what it is on all the locations that we go on opening night. And the reason that that show we have more people is because we do a lot of cross-promotion with a lot of businesses around the area. We give a lot of free tickets away, donate tickets, so usually they come on opening night, so that would be our busiest night.
Does the capacity change from like a Tuesday night to a Friday or Saturday?
The capacity never changed. That is the capacity that is for the tent.
I'm sorry, the attendance?
The attendance, yes.
From like a Tuesday to a Friday night, will it change dramatically?
The attendance changed from show to show, depending on, it's our first time here, so it's hard for us to, to say exactly what would be the attendance. But for example, we just finished on Woodland Hills at the Westfield Promenade. We were there three weeks, and we had an average of about four hundred and fifty people per show.
Okay. I have a few questions here. I'm sorry if I find them. City planner mentioned security. You will have an hour before and thirty minutes after the event? Is that correct?
Actually, the security staff that we have, they are part of our staff, so they are actually twenty-four hours a day on site.
Okay. So they're, they're, uh, uniformed armed staff?
Not armed, no, not armed. The, the, usually, usually the public, yeah, the public that comes to our event, there are families with kids, grandparents with kids, a lot of kids. So usually it's very easy to handle. I mean, we, like, like we said before, we have no rights. We have no alcohol. It's a very, people pay for their tickets. They go sit down, watch the show, and they leave.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Arlene Magallanes. I'm the security manager of Stonewood Center. Just wanted to add that we're also gonna have special detail security just for the event. That's part of ALA Universal, and they're fully in yellow bee, sorry, bumblebee uniforms. We're gonna have bike officers patrolling the event parking. We're also gonna have PD on site for courtesy patrols. So I've been talking with PD, and we have an event planned in place. I don't know if you have any other questions for the mall security?
Uh, I do have a question for the mall representatives. I don't know if you can help me. Sorry, I'm driving all you guys up there. Just a lot of questions.
Dina Henry, I'm the senior manager.
Hi, Dina.
Hi.
What was the determination in bringing Circus Vargas here to that location? Because it was, my question was, I'm really excited about it, by the way. I went to Circus Vargas as a kid, so I'm, I'm totally for family-friendly events and stuff like that, but it's more, since it is a first-year event, I think I'm concerned as a resident with like safety more than anything, beyond the time thing. I think we could get over that eventually. But I think safety and security for the area. As you know, there's a very busy restaurant on the corner of, you know, Firestone and Lakewood. That Olive Garden, like I said, is always very busy. There's always people waiting outside. Have you guys come up with a plan, other than what Circus Vargas has, for direction of traffic going in and out of, just, let's start with that Firestone interest, entrance into Olive Garden?
Yes, so our security team has traffic control components as part of their plan. And to go back to your original question, we brought them here because we were fortunate enough to have them at Lakewood Center.
Okay.
So I'm also the manager for Lakewood Center.
Okay.
As Annette is also the marketing manager for Lakewood Center, so we do both centers. So it was so successful and so well-received and so just embraced by the community that your mayor went to one of the shows and actually approached us and said, is there a way that we could bring this to the city of Downey, which started the conversations, which is how we got to this point here. So that's kind of how that evolved, because we have experience with them, with, with Lakewood. Our, our team of security is, will be specified to the event area and to the customer parking area. So they will be doing traffic control off of Firestone Boulevard in our lot, to make sure that there's no bottlenecks. Olive Garden, very busy restaurant on the weekends especially, and we have dedicated parking for Olive Garden guests only. They have seventy-five spaces right now that will be just for them, and our team is the one that is, uh, traffic mitigation for, for the Olive Garden parking guests versus the general mall guests versus the circus guests.
Okay. So my understanding is that Stonewood Mall is gonna have an attendant making sure people who park in Olive Garden parking lot aren't walking over to the circus? Because what I noticed is the, the entrance booth and the ticket booth is on Firestone. So for somebody to park in the back, they would have to walk probably half a mile to get into the front to that ticket booth. Am I right? Or is it probably a little less?
Yeah, I would say, you know...
Quarter mile.
Yeah, and we have, there's, there'll be a lot of signage, so...
Yeah.
As you saw, they're just...
I saw the signs today.
So, so our mall signage will go in tomorrow, once the site is tightened up and the fence is in, and ours will be directional as well. So security has vehicles, so if anybody needs a ride from the, because the parking for the event is over by Sears, so if they need a ride, there's an option for that too, but it's not that far.
I think that's all my recommendations, or my questions for now, and then I do have a couple of recommendations after you guys.
I want to piggyback off your comment in regards to the traffic control, because that, for me, I see it as a, as an issue, because all I, all I know of is the, there's only gonna be one traffic controller, not including your staff in Stonewood.
Correct.
That is not in part...
Because they're the applicant, so our traffic control plan is separate from the applicant. So we have our own, which we can share with you. It's just not gonna be part of their package, because it's, they're the applicant, we're the host site, so we're just layering on, on top of what they already have in place.
Is that something that we should have seen or discussed?
It's not something that, that you, by technicality, needed to see, but it is something that you could discuss, and there are some options that could be discussed once we close the public hearing and we have discussion amongst the planning commissioners, and I can provide some input as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead.
He's free to ask some questions regarding...
Oh, of course. Yeah, you're all... Oh, of course, yeah, you're all free to ask some questions, that's what we're doing.
You can go and ask the, the security detail from the mall, any questions you want regarding traffic?
So, if we, if we do see a need of increasing traffic, uh, staff controller, is that an issue?
No, that's not an issue.
No, that, that would not be an issue at all. If you guys recommend that we need more parking attendant, we can make it happen.
Okay.
So, you're set up to adjust your plan on the fly, that's how we bring it to you?
Absolutely, of course.
And the... It's a, it's a chain-link fence that'll be covered all the way around?
Yes, the event will be completely, as I discussed today, when I walked the site with the fire department, uh, we walk, I show them exactly where the fence is going to be. Each egress exit and entrance on the tent, when it's, where actually by the fence, will have a gate that will be open and will be actually, we'll, we'll monitor that, but they will, fire department, since we have fire standby, they will make sure that all those gates are open.
So, the fire inspector will be onsite the, the whole duration?
Every, every single event.
Would that be Downey Fire?
Yes.
Okay.
Folks, I know there's a lot of people sharing the mic, but if I can ask if you can get close to the mic when you're responding, uh, we're also streaming this live.
Sure.
My name is Giovanni Famili G, I'm their, uh, locations liaison. I just wanted to address the, uh, thing about the fence, is that they are panels? They're six-foot panels, or so, and they're only like, uh, six-foot across this way, so the panels are, I just wanted to give the impression that people will be locked in in the event of an emergency or anything like that. The panels are actually movable.
Are they breakaway or collapsible?
Yeah, are they ballasted, is that how they're sandbagged?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yes, they are. It's not one solid fence, it's actually, they've got six breaks every six feet.
Like a gate?
Yeah.
Exactly, they have like gate, they have like gate all around the tent, exactly where all the, uh, emergency exits are.
Who would open those, in case of a?
There will, there will be, no, act- those right there, they will be open during show time, all the time.
All the time.
Every single emergency exit, that's actually what we went through with the fire department this morning. They will, uh, the final inspection should be tomorrow morning if everything goes well. And, um, they will, uh, discuss the final details regarding the, who will manage those gates, and who will close them at the end of the night. And usually, those gates are there, the fencing is around there, mostly is not to have them during the event, but mostly to have them when the event is closed, when we are not having shows, so we can enclose the area and we don't have people just walking inside the tent or working inside of the event.
Understood. Another question, the, in the ticketing area, the box area, which I was there last night, it's on the, closest to the Firestone, are vehicles gonna be driving in front of that?
Yes, there is a, there is a line that is going to be open during the day, so we can have the flow of traffic. We have two options, with, we have done in the past and other, um, venues. Sometimes, we close the line in front of the ticket office, so, at, but on, we do it only at the end of the show, when the people come out at the same time. So, we close them, we close one end and we close the other end, so they can go out of the tent freely, and then we reopen them right after the show.
So, what you're, what I'm understanding is, that pathway of vehicles will be blocked?
Will be blocked with cones, will be blocked with cones when the show ends. And then reopen again, so we can have a flow of traffic driving to, to and from Olive Gardens.
Okay.
And, yeah, before the show, it's not an issue, there is ample room from the box office to the street, and we have a, a cha- a chain-link fence, which is more decorative, but it just indicates the area of, okay, this is the safe area, there's no street, so that people can, you know, stand in line or gather around in front of the ticket office without being in the street. So, we have about fifty feet of chain-link fence as well.
So, would that be performed by the one traffic controller?
No, 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 the traffic controller is not at this location, the traffic controller is at the entrance of the street, so, the Olive Garden entrance.
So, someone else has this function?
Yes, yes. Our other security personnel are monitoring this area in front of the box office. Then, we have an area which is past the box office, we have two more security personnel in the, we call the main entrance area, this is where you can, you know, buy your popcorn or souvenir. And then, after that, you go in the tent, and then there is six more of our security personnel in the tent.
Okay, great. Um, I should've asked this question at the very beginning, um, and I apologize, um, which I think most of us probably has, has that question, such a, uh, well-organized circus, I seen, I saw the, the pamphlet that was turned in, um, why the short notice? Or permit request? We're, we're, we're doing this the day before.
Yeah. We didn't know that there was a, a sixty-day council advance, uh, you have to give them an advance notice, and we got through that with the mayor's office. We came really because we were invited by the mayor, it's, he saw the show and thought it was, you know, something good for the city of Downey. And so, we changed another contract that we have with another city, we asked if we could come later in the year, because we wanted to accommodate that request, because we're always looking into new areas, we like building those new relationships. And we agreed that it would be something good for the city of Downey. We're a complete, I, they've been in business for fifty years, it is completely family-oriented, and we were just looking forward to the new prospect of a new area. So, we just went basically off of, um, Stonewood's request, that the mayor really wants you two guys to come here, and we tried to make that all happen. And we didn't realize how short of the timing it would be for the permit process, and, um, but we did everything to accommodate every request that they've made. I walked through pretty much all of the permits and was on the phone with every department, just said, "Can we make this happen?", and, um, very instrumental, uh, working with Madeline and, and Crystal to make sure that we are, were accommodating on anything that was, uh, had to do with our plans, any of the applications, all fees that needed to be paid, and, yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, who are you again?
I'm Giovanni Famili G, their, uh, locations liaison and marketing director.
So, you work for the circus?
Yes.
Okay, stay there, cause I'm gonna have some questions for you. Do you have any other questions?
None for the moment.
Okay, so Sebastian, stand there now. We understand that you have other venues in the cities of Laguna Hills, Lakewoods, and Cerritos, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you've been in business for thirteen years out of the fifty years?
For fifty years, yes.
Well, fifty years as Vargas, but ten to thirteen years as these present owners, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. In these other cities that you've been to, are you familiar with those cities' processes?
With the cities?
Processes?
Um, yes.
Very good, and you've been before planning commissions?
Yes, we have.
Very good. Do you consider yourselves sophisticated operators?
Most definitely. Actually, I, I wanna add to that, because, uh, I worked for Circus Vargas twenty years ago, and I actually was in retirement, and they invited me to come back and work, and for a whole year and a half, I pretty much told them no. And I agreed finally, okay, I'll come out of retirement. And the reason why I chose to come out of retirement, I said, "If I'm gonna come out of retirement, it's gotta be somebody that's really, really together", and, you know, I chose them, basically. I got bored and said, "I'm gonna do something", and I chose them because of their efficiency.
Yeah, this is, this isn't about you, I'm asking questions about the organization.
I understand that, but I was just telling you that the reason I chose them was because of their.
Sophistication.
And sophistication.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So, so, if you're a sophisticated operator of some organization, then why the comment of no knowledge of our own policies and processes here in the city of Downey? It, it seems to me it's a contradiction.
We didn't look into them before, because we didn't, uh, it wasn't until we were notified that we had an invitation, and then we looked into them, and I did, I found out that it was a thirty-day, so I thought, I didn't know about the city council approval, but I did contact, um, the department thirty-one days out, and then it took them a while to get back to me, um, and then I contacted Madeline, because I didn't get a response. It was the twenty-fourth, uh, so, like twenty-one, or twenty-four days out. I had contacted them thirty-one days out, and I didn't get a response from that individual, and so I contacted Madeline and said, "I'm still waiting for a response, um, what can we do?", and then she said I, I didn't have the, uh, timing, uh, proper, and then I s- I.
What, what did that mean to you, you didn't have the timing proper?
That we, I, I had told her advisor that I did contact the individual, I was waiting for them to call back, and they never called me back, and so I'm just a little concerned, are we gonna be able to come to the city of Downey or not? And then she said that, um, we were short on our, our timing at that point.
And did you ask for special privileges?
No, I did not, I just asked her, I, I just, I don't know what to do, and I, I explained the predicament that I put the circus in, cause I had canceled one contract to come here, and I just asked her if there was any, definitely not special privileges, I just asked, "Is there anything I can do to help? Can I walk the permits through department to department to kinda help expedite the process? And can I go before the city council? Can I write a letter? What can I do? Can I contact the mayor?" Uh, and she just said, "Well, you can make the submittal, and we can submit it before the commission, it's really up to them."
Very good, so, thank you. Did, um, how did you choose this date in particular?
How did we choose?
The date.
Oh, well, it was somewhere else, we had a lo- another location that we were potentially gonna go to.
I understand that, how did you choose the date to come to Downey?
Who offered the window?
Uh, yeah, it's because our route, we go, we try to start in San Diego and then just move.
Got it.
Upward north.
So, you, you determined the date?
Yeah, so we don't.
And this kinda fit in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, when you learned about, uh, the conflict with the resident-focused functions, um, did that have any influence on you moving forward or reconsidering the date?
A problem with, I'm sorry, what was that again?
Yeah, so you're in conflict currently with some other venues that are city-focused, right? Uh, did you take that into consideration in making your decision?
We weren't aware of, uh, the, the persons that reached out to us were the school, and we weren't aware that they were having a carnival, until just recently, when I was doing my event action plan, um, I found out about their carnival, but I was in contact with this high school, and they had no problems themselves, specifically Connie Quintero, who is the assistant principal over there, and I told her, uh, she was very excited about the fact that we were coming, and she even offered me to place a banner, maybe at her event. I asked her about a banner at the event, she said, "You know, I don't think that'll be a problem", and that, she was trying to think of ways that she can actually help us promote. She said, "We actually have tie-ins to elementary schools, if you bring some coupons over", and I said, "You know what, you guys are so amazing, and we wanna build, uh, a presence here in your community", and I offered her a hundred tickets, I gave her a hundred tickets for her school, and, um, we didn't realize there was a problem until just actually, I wasn't aware of it until today, but I guess, uh, the city notified Nelson that the school had an issue, which we resolved today, and I think they do have resident, I'm not sure, but their representatives are supposed to be here, but we made a very good donation to make sure that we can compensate them for any loss that they think that they're going to have as a result of our event, cause they are having their fundraiser event. But they are the only event that I know of that had a conflict with us coming, and we did everything today and resolved that issue.
What is?
Satisfied with the donation.
Thank you so much. What does the quote "own risk" mean to you?
What does "own risk"?
Yes, your own risk, what, what does that mean to you? Is that, is that a term you are familiar with?
Yes, sir, that, that, that means that we assume all the risks of coming, and we understand that if you guys don't approve it, we have to pack and leave. And, and I really, really hope you guys consider it and not have us do that. We're, um, pretty much, that's it. But we, but we do understand, sir, that we came on our own risk. Everybody knows that, uh, Stonewoods knows that, and.
Is this?
And, and I, and I'm not, um, just, I don't want you to think that we came here and we expect to be treated differently, not, not respecting you guys, uh, the, the city deadlines and the process that it should be, or what we're supposed to do when we come to the community. Uh, but sometimes, because we are moving so much, every, every two weeks, every three weeks, every week, we go to so many communities, so many communities, sometimes, some, some things and some things are overseen by us, and we come to a situation like this. So, but, but it's not, it's, I can assure you that it's not because we are, we don't care what, how the city process or how it is, i- it's not about that, that, that is not the case.
So, is this the first time you've had own risk in other cities, or is this something that's part of your modus operandi?
This is the first time.
The first time.
We have never been in this situation, uh, before, on, on the thirteen years that we've been running Circus Vargas.
Thank you, sir, so I'm just gonna continue, guys, that's okay with you?
Please.
Um, uh, do we have a provision of security for emergency services, ambulances, and/or any ca- uh, mass casualty provisions? I heard about the fences being movable, um, but do we have ballasts or any other impediments to vehicular traffic into, intrusion into the, the tent while there's activity?
Uh, no, we won't, we don't, uh, we will have barricades up for the parking, uh, set up, um, and we also have a ERP, emergency response plan in place, and area, separate area to head to in case an emergency happens. But there are no fixtures or nothing impeding traffic or?
So, so, when the show is there with five to seven hundred people, in that closed space tent, the driveway, we'll call from Firestone, will be open and accessible to vehicular traffic?
Correct, yes.
How far from the vehicular traffic is that tent?
From the floor, from the exit to the tent?
No, I'm sorry, so, so, we're going down the driveway, right? How far from?
I would say maybe about a hundred feet, maybe a hundred fifty.
Hundred and fifty feet, okay, thank you. But you said we have no provisions for standby ambulance?
We don't at the moment, we do have an area where FD will be, um, if it's, if they need to be dispatched, they will be parking there, it's, that's also the PD command post for them, and that's also a security post that we're gonna have on Firestone. You will be able to see us from Firestone, next to the ticket booth.
Thank you.
We also have a fire lane all the way around the tent, so accessible from each egress exit, so, if anything happens at any time, it, the tent can be accessed, uh, from any entrance, and the fire truck or ambulance could park the vehicle right by that particular exit, it wouldn't have to be the front of the tent, if something happens in the back, they can, there's an entrance in the back, and there's a twenty-foot fire lane in the back of the tent as required by the fire department.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Fermetta, I stepped on your toes here, do you have any other questions, sir?
No, so far, you're, all, all look great questions.
Commissioner Owens?
Uh, no, um, no questions at this time.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
Yes, I, I think this is for the Stonewood staff, um, and you mentioned earlier, there's provisions for the Olive Garden, uh, customers to park in their lot. I know that the Raising Canes has a, a large queue, especially on weekends, of vehicles, is there any provision in terms of, uh, any, any plan you have set up to deal with that?
Uh, singles for Raising Canes have designated parking only, um, and it's mostly the drive-thru that gets congested, uh, and that's kinda separate from the event, and we will have, uh, traffic control in that area as well, if it does get long. Uh, the weekends are the busiest for Canes as well, uh, late nights, like ten PM.
And then, just to, just to follow up, maybe clarify, uh, the commissioner said that, um, the driveway on Firestone will be open, and it's about a hundred and fifty feet from the tent, is there any, um, barrier there in terms of securing the area, blocking through traffic?
Yes, it's, so there's barricades that are gonna be set up tonight, um, and then there's gonna be security in the area as, as well. So, there'll be barricades, uh, just to make sure the flow goes in and out, um, and then, like you said, we're gonna open it up for traffic once the, the guests leave and the customers.
Okay.
I have, I have one last question, one for the security. So, how many security staff from Stonewood Mall do you guys have designated for the events during the event?
So, it's gonna be eight per show.
Eight per show?
So, tomorrow night will be seven thirty, it'll be eight security officers, aside from theirs.
And that's, that's for the entire mall, or is that just for the?
No, that's just for the event.
That's just for Circus Vargas, and then you have other security personnel for the mall? So, you have Stonewood, eight security personnel for Circus Vargas?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Also, one question, last question for Circus Vargas. You have in this, uh, diagram here, a food trailer. Is that serving hot food? Is it cold sandwiches? Is it something that goes through the health department?
Usually it's pretty much like a movie, movie theater food, hot dog, nachos, popcorn, cutting candy, canned sodas and water.
And this time we have some cafe lattes and cappuccinos as well.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for Stonewood. You've done this actually in Lakewood.
Yes.
Have you guys shared security from Lakewood and Stonewood information in regards to help?
Yes.
Better serve the-
And, um, even, I mean, on a higher level, we have shared, um, our experiences with the city staff that we had at Lakewood, with Downey City. We also had the city manager from Lakewood speak to the city manager of Downey to share his perceptions of it as well. So all of, all of the cross-communication happened.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We consider ourselves the triplet, so we share everything anyways. So there's not much that goes on at one center that we don't know about. And from a process standpoint, I know that was some of the questions. Um, I've only been at Stonewood for a month. I've been at Lakewood for five years. So this was all a learning process to me. I did reach out to Aldo and kind of get walked through what needs to happen for the next time so that we won't, from the mall standpoint, uh, have any of these issues again. We know the timing. We've actually built in additional time for any events that we want to bring to the center.
Okay. And one thing that I did notice from the drawing or that was presented to what is actually, uh, present, uh, at your location in regards to the staff trailers, um, what's circled on this plan is only two rows and you actually have three rows. Is that an issue for Stonewood?
For us or for them? For us, no. No, we have plenty of parking, so we're okay with it.
Okay.
And the trailer area is also gated off so that people driving by don't see the trailers. They'll just see the blue fence.
That was gated today?
Uh, it'll happen tonight, right?
Oh, tonight, okay. Cause I was there last night.
Right. If they're not done today-
Okay.
It'll all tighten up. It shrinks a little bit more than it is right now.
Thank you, understood.
I have one, one question that just came up and it's not specific to this right now, but it sounds like there's a future date planned. Any ballpark range this time next year, next summer?
Well, uh, our, our idea is every time we come to a new location is to come back about on the same time next year. If everything goes well, everybody's happy with the event at the end of the, the run, uh, our idea would be to come next year about the same time.
All right, thank you.
But we would be mindful of the high schools event.
In the timeframe.
Right. Which I just learned about the high school event today too, so it's good for us to know as well.
Any other questions?
No further questions.
We appreciate your time. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Has there been any correspondence other than mentioned before, either in favor or in opposition?
Um, yes, we've received an email, um, that was provided to the commission also in your packets, um, but there was no other correspondence.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to come back for any rebuttal of, uh? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to step forward respectfully and stay focused on the issue and discuss either in favor or opposition of what we have before us?
Well, I'll be in support, but now, on behalf of the plaintiff, the applicant, disclosure for written testimony. Mr. Fermetta gave his opinion based on what he heard, hearsay, and Mr. Duarte pointed out his hearsay. Irrelevant. The only testimony in my hand is the one on the back of this page from one resident. One resident. I'm the second resident and I'm here to petition on behalf of Circus Vargas because there's a pattern in practice by particular individuals. Am I not right, Crystal? For the record, did the mayor not say to you, it's okay? Let them go fast-track without a permit? No, strike that, strike that.
Please direct all questions and comments to me.
Mr. Dominguez, you're in the planning commission. Did you follow the directive of the mayor to rebuttal this issue and prolong it? No, I'm not going to answer that. I plead the fifth. Okay. Now this is the story behind planning commission. Past and future tents. When you would allow Bahuca's or Huca shops to open, you strictly gave them conditions. Then when they decided to create business within their business because they couldn't afford the rent, you raced them out of town. Am I not right or clear on that? Thank you. So where is the mayor, Rick Rodriguez? Where is Janice Hahn? People have choices. People make choices. People determine their choices, unfortunately, at the last minute. That's why the permit process is unconstitutional and violates people's civil rights to due process when they're here and acting in good faith on their DBA. Am I not right, Mr. Fermetta? Thank you. No answer. Good results. Now in question, as you see, there are no animals other than me, an asshole, talking about the applicant shall obtain a tent permit from the fire department. And for the record, we have the fire department in the back of this chamber. Now the tents and the membrane structures have an area of an axis of 400 square feet shall require a separate tent permit. Do they or do they not have one or two permits at this day and time as of Wednesday, May 8th? Counsel, do I got an answer? No. Exactly. Because California Code 3103.2, applicant shall ensure a tent permit is obtained. Do you have a permit? Yes, they say we got a permit. Then we didn't follow the rules of the agenda or the decorum of how commissioners work in favor of the DBAs. Instead, you bring them in here, you extort them for more monies, get additional permits, and then you hold them hostage whether or not you have the right to DBA on the timeframe they have on calendar from May 14th to May 28th. Am I not clear? So in addition to that, did you get any free tickets? Did any one of you take tickets? None of you were bribed? None of you? So the conditions of your permit are false. In addition to that, they're following the American Disability Act, except under one rule which I find offensive, is that I'm a VIP. I'm a VIP, like the city attorney, Yvette Garcia, for the record, and I demand one ADA seating on aisle at low level for VIP seating for those who are disabled, handicapped, retarded or stupid like me, an asshole who comes in here daily and rants about how the conditions and permit process violate our constitutional rights because you violate them all the time. Thank you, UCLA, and thank you, University of Spoiled Children, Armando Herman, for
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to graciously come up and speak before us? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Greg Earhart. I'm at 10718 Eldon Avenue, uh, north side of Cecilia Avenue. I was a little shocked when I read the article in The Patriot, when I went into some of the stores in town and saw discounts and then to hear about the, um, placement of tents, et cetera. It sounded like a little proactive to me when you folks hadn't even approved it yet. Um, I'm not here to disapprove or approve or make a comment about the circus. I think everybody will enjoy it. I have concerns, as some of you people do, about traffic direction, the parking issue, and specifically on the north side of Cecilia. As you know, we've had nothing but hate and discontent about parking and it's still going on. And they've tried the best they can to accommodate parking, um, and recognizing that Cecilia, Woodruff is a primary artery for traffic as well as emergency equipment. The fire station over on Florence utilizes Woodruff and Cecilia quite often. To accommodate, um, some kind of equipment, move, mobility within the parking of the Stonewood, well, they've only got about three entrances and exits. And as far as traffic concern is, like your concern about that, uh, I, I can't see it myself, but if they're going to control traffic from Firestone adjacent to the Olive Garden and getting in, um, I don't know how many lanes you're going to have in there, but it could be pretty congested. Um, the other concern I have about is trash. We're already encountering excessive amount of, of, uh, food wrappers, drinks, cartons, whatever, in the residents north of Stonewood. That's really, my only concern was safety, traffic control, parking and trash. Thank you very much for listening to me and have a great evening.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Dominguez, planning commissioners. My name's Jose Solachi. I'm the president, CEO of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce and I just wanted to come and speak. Uh, thank you for the questions that you ask. Um, on behalf of our chamber and our business community in Lakewood, we had an amazing experience with the circus. Um, we actually were very concerned with a lot of similar questions, like the businesses, how are they going to do during the shows? And I had to tell you that the traffic that it caused is a good thing for us in Lakewood because a lot more people left their dollars in their restaurants. People ate before, before the shows or after the show. I know the circus wants people to eat at their, at their event, but people obviously prefer Red Lobster and things that we have iteries in Lakewood. So from a business perspective, we were very happy with the outcome. Uh, we work with the city very closely and some of the same concerns happen in Lakewood, uh, from, from the business community and we were happy to see the outcome. They're very professional. So I just wanted to come and share that perspective from the business perspective. Uh, we didn't have one concern and I could tell you for a fact that the residents called the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, something as simple as when they don't get their newspaper in the mail or at home, to obviously any concern because they feel that Lakewood Chamber is the second city hall. But we do hear concerns and luckily, and we were blessed to not have a concern, knock on wood, that happens every year, um, from this is, and I said, cause this is my first time experiencing the circus in, in, in Lakewood, as I'm the newest, uh, chamber president there. Um, so I'm just happy to say that they are definitely a good group to work with and hopefully give them the opportunity to come to Downey. Um, I had to tell you a little cheesy story. My mom, I told her this today, I was walk, I was driving here to your city for the planning commission meeting and then she said, oh, where's you're going to be? I said, at the mall, next to Olive Garden. She goes, oh, but, well, make sure you take me to the circus and you take me to Olive Garden before we go to the show. So, so I'm not, I'm sharing that cheesy moment because even my mom's already ready to come to the circus. And I told her, Mom, I already took you to the one in Lakewood. She goes, yeah, but in Lakewood, you don't have Olive Garden and in Downey they do. So anyway, to the point that your community is going to come and shop, um, from, if people come from the outside, they're going to come and shop locally to you and leave your dollars. So with that, hopefully you give the Circus Vargas a opportunity and like Commissioner Jimmy, sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Um, as a kid, I enjoyed Circus Vargas and I'm so happy to have them, um, still continuing their legacy in our local communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. The floor is still open for anyone from the audience to come forward and give dissmolity in favor or opposition.
Hello, everyone. My name is Damien Tenor. I'm a resident of Downey. Um, I'm literally right off of, uh, 9248 Cecilia Street, so it's corner Cecilia and Woodruff. So my backyard is literally the Stonewood parking lot. Um, I, same thing like everyone else, I've enjoyed the circus when I was a young kid, but I've always remembered the circus as a, having it be in a big, vast, open land area, like a park type, where there is no other residences or businesses in the area. After hearing some of this information, I'm so kind of shocked that they're even considering that intersection of going next to Olive Garden. Uh, I think that's just a complete disaster in my opinion. So great, I don't know nothing about the planning commission and how that works, so, um, I apologize for sounding a little bit off on that. But in terms of, I'm more concerned of the after the circus is done. Yes, it's going to bring over 700 guests, which is a great turnout for them, but with congestion already there with, with Canes and the, like the resident said, all the donuts or people are, are making a lot of noise behind literally that parking area, that's what I'm in concern. Maybe I'm a little biased because I'm, that's literally my residence. I've been subject to hearing all those noise complaints. Um, Stonewood has not done an adequate job in terms of patrolling that area. I've seen donut, uh, kids doing donuts behind the parking lot there for more than 10 minutes with no obstruction. They're just free will every weekend consistently, every night. So bringing in that many more, uh, traffic into the area, I think it's just going to be a very not pleasant situation, considering that I've been there for a while now and it's just, my main concern is just safety in terms of the noise, the people that's going to be bringing and just the people lingering after the events are over. So yes, it's a great turnout that's going to bring more people to Downey to enjoy the restaurants, but with the congestion already there with Canes and that drive-through line going past yours, it's just going to bring more people and draw more of a crowd to that general area. That's going to go way beyond past the time that the event's supposed to be over. So that they're seeing that the area that they're going to be patrolling or guarding is going to be closer to the tent area, I'm more concerned, concerned of the area just past that and not just half an hour after the event's over. So if there can be any adjustments made to that, I would really be grateful for any additional security measures to be made beyond past that parking area in the back because it's already an issue now that Stonewood has not been able to address for the couple of years I've been complaining to some of their office, uh, staff there already. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you for coming forward, sir. Appreciate your time. Floor is still open for anyone in the audience to come forward to give dissmolity in favor or in opposition of the applicant. Does the applicant wish to have rebuttal?
Hello, um, Katia Quiroga here. Um, so I wanted to first address the issue of the trash. We have our own personnel that cleans the trash, not only inside, but also around the parameters of the tent. So everywhere, uh, a vehicle parked that went to the circus, we check and clean that area. And sometimes, many times, we will go even beyond those areas and clean up the trash from, uh, mall visitors. So, and that's actually, that's every evening after the show. Also, I want to keep, I want everyone to keep in mind, we don't have 700 attendance every show. So like a Saturday or Friday early show, usually 200, 250. So it's not that impactful every show. Also, keep in mind that in every car is about three to four people. So even if we see up to 400 people, it will be an additional approximately 80 to 100 cars more. So, uh, I want people to keep in mind, the impact is not as great as everyone may think. And, you know, that's why we have the right amount of security and parking staff in place and we can always add to that if needed, um, to, to, to take care of those issues. And we do play a lot of malls, Macerich, Simon, Westfield, in very, very busy areas. We played, uh, just recently, we came from Topanga Plaza and their village that they just opened about two years ago, extremely busy. And we manage to keep them happy with our parking attendance and the way we do the parking and we have not seen any issues with traffic whatsoever.
I'm sorry, yes. I just wanted to comment on the comment with the resident. Um, as far as that area where he's talking about, we're going to have extra bike patrol units in that area to secure the area and after the event as well, just to make sure there's no hanging out or loitering in the area. As far as the donuts, uh, it's probably not more than a minute or two minutes that that happens. Um, after that, PD is called, so, um, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and pretty much that's it. I think also the type of audience, the, that comes to our shows is not the type of, there are going to be donuts in the parking lot. And I think by having the type of, um, audience that we will bring to our show will diminish, I think, the empty parking lots that they give room to somebody maybe to go there and do donuts and do things that they're not supposed to on an empty parking lot, like just being busy. Um, and pretty much, yeah, pretty much, that's it.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Uh, yes, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution 19-3091 approving special event permit for Circus Vargas, PLN-91. event permit for Circus Vargas, PLN-19-00060.
Okay. So the hearing on PLN-19-00060 is not closed. Time for discussion, gentlemen, discussion. Commissioner Ferreira?
I am, I've been to this particular circus as always in element. I remember Circus Vargas very clearly. So I really enjoyed the circus. I was a different circus back then as what it is today. Setting that aside, I appreciate and thank you for your presentation and for answering our questions. Give us a better understanding of how this process, how you ended up in this process, and how you deal with certain things. I still think that not knowing or having not knowing information from the Stonewood Mall regarding traffic control, I would request an extra, two to three traffic controllers. That is my request with the rest of the commissioners, just to keep the flow, traffic. Other than that, I have no further concerns or any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Spatopoulos.
I also want to thank you for coming here today. And also thank you for that generous donation.
I commend you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I'm also concerned primarily about safety.
Obviously, we're going to have a lot of kids there. And I think this will be easier for you next year.
Obviously, if you decide to come back.
If you decide to approve this.
I think today, because we have an experience, or we have a lot of questions, and I think they're all pretty valid. I agree with Commissioner Ferreira. I would actually go a step further.
I think it's fair.
To add traffic attendance at every entrance, including the mall, including Cecilia.
We have a resident here today that was concerned.
Even that's not a part of the mall that has a traffic.
I think it's going to extend to all the way even to the Lakewood side.
So we have several entrances there.
My recommendation would be the traffic officers at least two.
At every entrance.
Uniform fluorescent, so people know they're traffic officers.
There are traffic officers or whatever the case may be.
And they're able to direct traffic.
Because just as a resident, that place is already, you know, at least.
At least the east side.
At least the east side.
Towards Olive Garden.
So I would recommend two traffic officers at every entrance to the mall.
Fluorescent uniforms, so people know who they are, designated with signs to direct traffic.
I'm also concerned with traffic flow from the park in the back to the front. That's primarily where most of the patrons will be parked, is behind the Sears, from what I see on the map. So I would recommend some type of directional traffic to where somebody's back there saying this way. I would even go a step further to put some type of walkway or maybe mid-size directional arrows pointing. If I was attending the mall and I didn't know that mall, I would just kind of be walking around. If there were directional signs back there saying, hey, this way to the circus, this way to the entrance, I think it would make a huge difference. So those are my two biggest things. My third one I had here as a recommendation was trash, trash pickup. You addressed it, and we will hold you accountable. We're all residents, so we'll be by there checking out the traffic. Also, another recommendation, and I'll leave this open for discussion, with those traffic officers, I would address another citizen's concern with extending, instead of a half hour, an hour after the event for security and personnel. They had a half hour on their proposal. And then my last recommendation, which is kind of out there, and I don't know, I can't picture in my mind how the lighting is on the side. I just kind of pictured in my mind, kind of dark. I don't know if Stonewood Mall has addressed that.
What side?
Behind Canes and the Sears, where I believe the majority of the parking for that circus will be. I just, I feel the lighting is poor. I don't know, maybe another resident here can kind of give me an idea of what it's like. But I would recommend portable lighting on those parking areas in the back. All the items I recommended and I'm throwing out there for you guys are not high-cost items. They're very reasonable. I think you need to understand, as a commissioner, our duty to represent the citizens, and it's really tough, the way you guys kind of threw this on us. So I think they're pretty reasonable recommendations, and I think it's, you know, up for discussion. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Owens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I as well concur with my fellow commissioners in regards to their safety concerns. I share that. In regards to those, we can condition accordingly, you know, as we move forward or consider moving forward. I'm certainly impressed with the levels of necessary deployment, you know, put forth by Circus Vargas, Stonewood Mall, you know, in this 12th hour, if you will, in the last minute. I'll stop there with my support, and I'll just be critical for a moment. I'm not good with this process. I think it's a slippery slope. If we just take something that is put on us in the last minute and certainly move in and around to accommodate. The accommodations, again, can be put in place with these conditions, but the process is kind of sloppy. Now, we did have a couple of residents step up and express concerns. I wish there were more. I usually like to hear the impact from those who are certainly directly impacted. I live on the other part of town. I don't frequent Stonewood Mall too often, may not go to the circus at this time, did not attend when I was a child. So just all those things are working against me. But nonetheless, I don't like the process, just in as much as we don't have enough time to prepare. I know next year would be without any, you know, any fault, any concern. I just don't like the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Duarte?
You know, I'd like to echo some of the thoughts by some of the commissioners made today. You know, I think just for future reference, just for staff, if we had maybe that report of the extra layering from the Stonewood Center themselves, I think that probably would have alleviated a lot of concerns of just the traffic, just knowing that there is, you know, I think everybody's made comments about extra traffic controllers. And from what I'm getting, the Stonewood representatives, those are already in place. So it'd been nice to know that, just for future references. I know that's not part of the applicant and advocate process, but in terms of overview and totality, it'd be nice to know that because I think that probably would have, you know, again, alleviated a lot of concerns. You know, I'm, you know, I think just like Commissioner Ferreira and Commissioner Spatopoulos stated, you know, I would be in approval if then maybe there was extra traffic controllers, not only where we said the Firestone, maybe on Woodruff and Cecilia. I don't know if you have to go all the way to the west side, the Lakewood side, but, you know, in just those areas, just north, south, and east of the actual event. I think that, you know, having two at each of those entrances, I think would be beneficial. You know, and just going talking about the process, I, you know, when I look at the process, I look at it, you know, looking at this, and I say, listen, is this something that, you know, Commissioner Owens has stated, the slippery slope, is it, you know, we're going to get stuff put out the last minute, kind of like ambush style? You know, listen to the applicant today, I don't, I don't get that sense. That's what it was. So, but yeah, definitely, you know, future, anytime in the future, it'd be better. We had a little more time, but I didn't, I didn't see that, that this was an actual attempt to circumvent any of our process here. It just, you know, for lack of familiarity in this area, or, you know, whatever it was. But, you know, I definitely recommend a little more traffic control. And, but, you know, as a kid, I went to Circus Vargas also. You know, I think it's a common theme here. You know, it wasn't in the city of Downey, so it's nice to have it here. I know it's changed now, but, you know, it's a family-oriented event, which I do like in the city. So, you know, those are my concerns and those are my thoughts on it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shuler, can you describe or discuss, define what at risk means as far from the city perspective?
Sure thing, Chairman. At risk, it reflects the conversation or the question and the response that you receive back from the applicant. It means that they're rolling the dice. It means that they are investing time, money, resources, materials, in this case installation and personnel, without an assurance that that activity is going to be approved. And so if a planning commission denial is instituted tonight, then they are not allowed to open their doors tomorrow. If an appeal from a resident or anybody else is also filed, they won't be able, they won't be able to open their doors tomorrow either until that appeal is resolved.
So would you say this is an acceptable methodology for any applicant to come in and not follow our policies and procedures?
Oh, no, not at all. Unfortunately, it does happen. It's more common than what we'd like to see, but it's not acceptable. Yeah, we would prefer that the planning commission has provided more time, and of course, staff has provided more time as we conduct our analysis on any activity.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, so we've got a few things to discuss here, and that is the amount of traffic controllers. So also placement thereof. We've heard here from the commissioners that either two or three additional singularly, or having traffic controllers, two officers per every entrance. I think we should discuss that to see if we're going to add that as part of the addendum to this process. So let's discuss that.
Do we need to make a submittal at this time on a request to put two traffic controllers at every entrance to the mall, uniformed or with some type of fluorescent identification that they are traffic controllers?
You can make a motion to that, and then we can vote on that.
Okay.
And if I can interject, in order to provide staff clear direction, we'd like clarity from the planning commission. So for instance, there's going to be X amount at, X amount of entrances. And in terms of what they wear, it's, you know, you could just say something bright, you know, as opposed to dark colors that indicate that they are providing traffic control. And so that's what the planning commission needs to agree upon is how many and where. And then we would insert then a condition that reflects that.
Yeah, so we have the, we have either two or three controllers in fluorescent clothing or two officers per entrance. I think that's what we're discussing, so.
I would make a motion to say two uniform traffic control officers at every entrance to the mall. This is separate from Stonewood Mall, so I would say, I don't know if our city attorney needs to write this in, but two traffic controllers at each entrance to the mall, uniformed. I would specify fluorescent. That's separate than what Stonewood provides as far as security. Circus Vargas is already providing one traffic officer, so they can determine where that person goes. So I'm assuming in total, two at each entrance plus the one that they had already put in.
If I can assist, if we look back at the Bastards event, there's condition number 47, which says, for instance, "Security officers shall be easily identifiable in brightly-colored security shirts." "The security shirts shall not resemble the color of police, of Downey police officers. The shirts shall not be blue or black." So I think there's some text that you can pull from that. And now, once again, it's not a security issue, it's not a conflict with the police department, but I think the easily identifiable in brightly-colored shirts is something that would work.
Why don't I make a recommendation? I think it would be easier to have the planning commission tell us what you want. And maybe we can, if we need some time for staff to formulate the language, pull from language, maybe that's already available to us. And then after your recess, we can come back and read all those conditions you want to add that you've given us direction to. We'll have those set out in language, and we could just read them all into the record. But for now, I think it'd be easier, just tell us what you'd like to see in concept, and then we'll take a recess, come up with the language, come back, read those into the record, and then you can take your action.
Right.
Does that work?
I would suggest under, in this part of the police department conditions, the language that Aldo had suggested coming out of the number 47 under police in the Bastards item to be noted in as item 51 under police in this item.
So right now, we have a motion for two identifiable traffic controllers at every entrance to the mall. So, correct? So we need a second on that motion.
You know, I can just say something prior to that is, I just want to say that again. I think that's why it'd be important to have that extra layering information, because they might be, they might be complying right now. We don't know. So just for the future. And then one other item, I think that Commissioner Spatopoulos said that I'm in agreement with, we can bring up after, this is the patrol one hour instead of half hour after.
We'll talk about that in a minute.
By the way, that's in addition to what Stonewood Mall is doing. So Stonewood Mall is providing eight security officers specifically for the event, and in addition, whatever they're doing for their mall. So the eight security officers for Circus Vargas are separate from the traffic controllers that we're requesting to.
Correct. My understanding is that Stonewood Mall was going to have also traffic controllers. Now, I don't have an issue whether it's supplied by the circus or by Stonewood Mall, as long as there is a traffic controller at the three locations, right?
So we have motion on the table right now for two traffic controllers at each entrance. So we need a second.
Now, I just want a little bit of clarity. I get the two at the entrance, or is it one at the entrance and one further down, like a 50 feet?
He said every entrance, every entrance, he said.
Every entrance, and they can determine, I think they can or will be able to determine eventually the amount of traffic, how traffic flows. We're putting our trust in you guys. You guys are the professionals on how to run this event. We're commissioners here trying to protect the safety of the residents. So what we're proposing is...
So right now, it's a motion you made. We need a second in order to move forward on this or not.
My motion is for two traffic controllers per entry and exit at the Stonewood Mall.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. May I have a roll call, Mary?
Can we add additional?
Let's take this one first, and then we'll go to the next item.
We need language from staff for the...
We'll develop that later.
This is just to vote on the concept of what's being proposed. We'll take a recess, and we'll come up with the language, and then come back and read it into the record. We just need direction right now.
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Spatopoulos, seconded by Commissioner Ferreira, to add additional conditions of approval regarding traffic controllers at each entrance.
That would be two traffic control.
For entrance.
Guards or officers at each entrance. Is that right?
That's what he said.
Vote. Can we take a vote?
Roll call.
Mary?
Aye.
Duarte?
Aye.
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 Could we do roll call? Just call each of the members, and then have them issue their vote. That would be a lot cleaner.
Commissioner Ferreira?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Chair Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And Commissioner Spatopoulos?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary. So next thing we need to discuss here is walkway directional arrows. So we heard the commissioner say that that was something he wanted to discuss for public safety. So further discussion?
And just so I can explain it real quick, I think it's very simple. Just signs pointing from the side and the rear of the parking lot to the main entrances of the circus. Simple enough for a child to read and know where he's going, to stay out of the parking Simple enough for a child to read and know where he's going, to stay out of the parking lot and stay out of, uh, traffic.
Aldo, again, is that something that we need staff to have concrete, uh, guidance? Or will you be able to come up with something?
No, we'll be able to come with some, but we need some guidance. So where do you, where do you want the signs?
So you want animation? You want wording?
No, no, no.
Wayfinding needs?
Not there, just wayfinding signs, just tell us where.
Wayfinding signs on simple posts, three to four feet directing traffic directional towards the front.
And it's on walkways, you said, right?
On walkways, because there really is no walkway, other than the Sears, uh, uh, curb that goes into the store. So people, I'm assuming, are gonna be walking where cars are driving.
Are you referring from the north parking lot, northeast parking lot to the front?
I'm referring to the northeast and east side of the parking lot.
Okay.
Cause that's primarily the, it's, that's where it says customer parking. So the south side customer parking, I'm assuming they know where to go, the tent's right in front of them. Uh, and there's not traffic going back and forth. That area, there's traffic going back and forth. So I would suggest directional signs starting at the Sears, going to the front. So however we can word that, I think.
Any discussion on this topic?
We'll, we'll work on the language, but is that enough, um, specificity for the staff? Yes? That we can come up with some language?
Yes.
Any other discussion from?
Direction on that.
Thank you, uh, attorney. Is there any discussion on this concept? Do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to, um, include directional traffic signs from northeast side of parking lot and east side parking lot behind Canes, or, uh, what is that, Olive Garden?
Is there a second?
You added some dimensions, or you gave some dimensions? You need that?
I mentioned four feet.
No?
Eye level.
No, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't go dimensions.
Specifics.
Yeah, we'll see what works for him.
Do we have a second on this motion?
It'll be your measuring tape next.
There is no second on the motion, the motion dies. Next thing we're discussing is, um, security offers, officers, pardon me, uh, up to one hour after the close of the event. Any discussion on, on that? Okay, I think that's a good idea. I think it's a good idea to have security there extending an hour, just like it was in the other event, whether it's a special event brought on by any city or organizational, uh, venue, or, um, a pub. So I agree, and I think that that's a good idea. Uh, I think we should, we should certainly have, uh, added security. Discussion?
I agree.
No, I think, I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion to have security officers one hour after?
Motion is to have security one hour, one hour after, not half hour after.
Okay, I second it. May we have a vote, Mary?
Okay. Commissioner Formetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Chair Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And Commissioner Spatopoulos?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next thing we're discussing is portable lighting. We had a discussion here on added, uh, illumination. I think the parking lot is what, one lux? I think that's what we know it to be from previous, uh, discussions. Uh, the lighting in the parking lot over by Canes is thought to be dark, but I think it's compliant with the city one lux rule, correct?
It sure is. Those lights are compliant with their codes.
Okay, very good. So the question was, should we have portable lighting, given the, uh, number of individuals who'll be pedestrians in that, in that region, emanating either to or fro the event? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on additional lighting as a stipulation?
I'm looking at the times of the performances as a guide. Um, we're in daylight savings time now. It looks like, uh, the latest closing, seven thirty PM, or is that the start?
Eight, eight, nine PM.
Nine PM, okay.
Friday, Saturday, two days.
Some additional lighting would be my preference. How to condition that, how to call out for a temporary telescoping overhead lighting structure?
Yes to all of that, and what I would recommend that we do, uh, with, with staff is that we edit condition number thirteen. Condition number thirteen currently reads, "All necessary lighting shall be directed away from nearby residential uses." But once again, I think we incorporate a, a sentence in terms of, uh, additional temporary lighting shall be installed, uh, along the Woodruff, um, um, eastern edge of Stonewood Mall, and would consist of temporary, um, uh, illumination directed away from residential neighborhoods.
Diesel powered.
Yeah.
Diesel powered, you said?
Diesel powered, as an example, telescoping overhead.
So are we looking for a certain amount of illumination, like some?
No, I wouldn't dive into that. I, I think that additional lighting will, will suffice there.
Okay. Any other discussion on this lighting issue?
Solar powered. Battery.
As long as it's not, doesn't cause more noise. Diesel?
Well, battery powered, or, you know, or solar. There's those options as well.
Do we wanna get that specific? I'm not sure we wanna do that.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, so it, do we have a motion on the additional lighting as described by Mr. Schindler and Commissioner Owens on additional lighting being telescoping, pointed away from residences, uh, in order to provide added illumination on the pedestrians? Do I have a motion on that?
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
So a first and a second, Mary. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Formetta?
Uh, no.
Okay. Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commission, Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, Chairman Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And Commissioner Spatopoulos?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes with four in favor, and Commissioner Formetta voting against.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all?
So these are conditions that we just voted upon. We're still in the discussion phase. Process, uh, we discussed, uh, process being a slippery slope, uh, accommodating for, uh, an outlier, um, not being an ambush, uh, pros- process that, uh, the applicant initiated, uh, and there was ignorance on part of the process of two Downeys, um, procedures. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm trying to give the applicant, uh, benefit of doubt that they were acting without malice. Uh, they came here on the behest of a councilperson mayor, they say, um, directed in conflict with an established date of another venue, uh, and were trying to accommodate the request of the mayor in order to bring Circus Vargas to Downey. Um, I could see where like, it could easily be misinterpreted as, "We need to go, we need to go now, all hands on deck." And then they find out that there's a process that maybe, they may be in conflict with. I think that, um, no harm will fall at this point. I do agree that it is a slippery slope if we continue, you know, accepting, uh, or making certain exceptions on a consistent basis. But I think if we make it clear to the applicant that this should not happen again, that, uh, if they come forth and the process is aberrant, then they will face the consequence of a rejection. So that's my opinion, based on the questions that I asked and the information that I've received so far. I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners.
I'm in agreement with your statement. I think the, there is a process in place, um, that needs to be followed. Uh, we don't want, um, the planning commissioner to be seen as, we're just gonna, things are gonna happen before us, and we're gonna rubber stamp it and move forward. I understand that this was not the case. That has been pretty much clear. There was, I don't believe there was any malice on Circus Vargas at all. I understand now, uh, what occurred, um, but moving forward, um, I don't think we're gonna have an issue with Circus Vargas, just to make that clear, moving forward with them, they know now our permitting process. But moving forward with other organi- uh, businesses, um, that may expect the same, um, approval, probably not the case.
The show must go on. I'm, I'm not good with the process, I stated that earlier, but, uh, the way that this operator, uh, performs, you know, and the steps that they have taken and the conditions we have discussed, it's satisfactory at this time, and it'll only improve on the next request.
Mm-hmm. You know, I think I've made my comments in, uh, in terms of the process. Um, you know, it's not, it wasn't ideal, but, uh, again, I, I saw it as something, uh, again, we mentioned malice, I don't think it was with malice. Um, so, you know, I've, I already made my comments clear, but, uh, yeah, I definitely, uh, next time, hopefully sometime next year, this is not the case.
I agree with everybody up here as well. I think there was no malice. I think that, uh, we, we, we had good questions. Coming in here today, I wasn't really happy about the whole situation, but I think they presented themselves well. I think they have a history behind them in, uh, how they've done things in the past. I'm just, uh, I hope that it's done correctly, and I have confidence that with your history, uh, it will be done correctly. Um, and just focus on that traffic. My biggest concern was, you know, my kids are older now, but I can't, you know, I can imagine my kids running across that Olive Garden parking lot into the Circus Vargas. You guys do this all over the place. We know our city and our community, and you guys need to put a lot of emphasis on that corner. That cross traffic is, is going to be a big issue for you guys, and you guys need to focus on it. Uh, and make sure that that entrance, primarily that entrance stays safe. Um, and that's it. I agree, there was no malice, and you guys made a good presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the other one was a request for full disclosure. I think we had full disclosure according to our own city, um, stipulations, but any other additional information that comes forth, I think might be appreciated in the future, just an FYI. So now we move to the staff. Does the staff wish to have a recess in order for you to come up with language that would be appropriate?
Yes, please, who'd like to take a recess, and I think we need probably fifteen minutes?
Uh, if it's the chair's, um, preference, I do have, um, some proposed language that I can.
Great, we're ready to go.
Um, so the condition would read, "Two traffic controllers, uniformed in highly visible clothing, must be provided at every entrance to the shopping center."
Where's it going?
Where would that be?
What number?
That would be addition of condition number fifty-one.
Can I add something? I don't know if it makes a difference, but can we add fluorescent in there or something to distinguish? We don't want, you know, guys with, is that something we can put in? Is it?
Yeah, they make fluorescent clothing.
Reflective?
Reflective? Uh, just something to.
Okay.
Light stripes.
Whatever, Howard's.
Reflective is good. We can keep it out of the eighties, I don't know, whatever works. Reflective.
Okay, let's move on. Next.
One, one quick question. We said, just for clarification, we said all entrance. There's entrance on the Lakewood side. We're not including Lakewood. We're only including?
No. No, it's including every entrance to that mall.
Everyone, yes. Totally encompassing. Okay.
It's good.
Were we satisfied with the, the condition as it was read by staff?
Wanna read it again, please?
"Two traffic controllers, uniformed in highly visible or reflective clothing, must be provided at every entrance to the shopping center."
And that will be listed as new condition number fifty-one.
Okay, next.
Okay, the next item would be an amendment to existing condition forty-eight. Um, existing condition reads, "The applicant must adhere to the security plan submitted on April twenty-six, twenty nineteen, as part of the special event application, which has been reviewed and approved by Downey Police Department." We will add an additional sentence to that identifying, um, "Security plan shall be revised to provide security for one hour each, after each event."
I have before in there, right? You're just adding the hour after in that line?
Correct. So it, the existing security plan still applies, the only amendment is that it's an hour after.
Is that sufficient? Okay, next.
Okay, and the last amendment will be to item, condition number thirteen, which currently reads, "All necessary lighting shall be directed away from nearby residential uses." Um, the amendment will add an additional sentence stating, "Additional lighting shall be provided in parking area to the east of the event site along Woodruff Avenue and directed away from residential properties."
So I think you're missing the telescoping.
I apologize, okay. Additional telesc.
The goal, the goal, I'm sorry. The intent here, as I understand it, is to have a greater amount of illumination on a broader surface area in order to ensure safety of pedestrians. So that's the, the intent, as I understand it. So we have a, an electrical specialist here that thinks that that can be easily achieved by a telescoping portable light source. So I think if we're, if we are succinct in that, then I think we're gonna achieve the intent of the commission.
Additional telescoping lighting shall be provided in the parking area to provide, um, illuminated areas for pedestrians to the east of the event site along Woodruff Avenue.
Is that what your intent was?
Yes, thank you.
Any comments from the commissioners on this? Okay, and that's the number, which one?
That is amendment to, um, condition thirteen.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
That's it.
Okay. It's time for a motion.
Now, if, if I can interject, a city attorney, the motion should include those amendments to those conditions.
That's right.
There you go.
What if the staff recommended, did, did we get a staff recommendation? Can you, can you repeat it again, and then we'll add the, uh, including the amend, the additional, uh, conditions?
Yes, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution nineteen dash three zero nine one with the amended conditions. Approving special event permit for Circus Vargas, PLN dash nineteen dash zero 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 six zero.
I'll make a motion as staff has just read to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Chairman Owens and a second by Vice Chairman Duarte. Mary, have a roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Formetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Chair Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Aye.
Commissioner Spatopoulos?
Aye.
So it's been approved to move forward with approval of PLN dash one nine dash zero 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 six zero. The action of the planning commission will be final unless the matter is appealed to the city council with the appropriate fee within a specified time period set forth in the city ordinance. This concludes PLN dash sixteen dash zero 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 six zero. We will be taking a, uh, ten-minute recess at this point in time. We will be taking a ten-minute recess at this point in time.
We're gonna go ahead and get this recess over and we're going to go live. We're live. We'll be hearing on PLN-18-00172. Does the secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Will the Director of Community Development introduce the staff making their presentation?
Thank you Chairman Dominguez. Tonight we have our Associate Planner Alfonso Hernandez making our presentation.
Good evening Chairman Dominguez and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight you're being asked to consider a site plan review, a conditional use permit, a variance, and a tentative parcel map. The location is 8818 Imperial Highway. And the project consists of the remodel of an existing 10,473 square foot building, the construction of a new 4,000 square foot restaurant with drive-through and outdoor dining, a parking reduction, and a subdivision. The applicant is Ryan Carsonson and the tenant for the new restaurant will be Chick-fil-A. This is an aerial of the subject property outlined in red at the southwest corner of Imperial and Lakewood. Outlined in yellow and green are the existing buildings. The yellow represents the new remodeled building and the structures in green will be demolished. This is the zoning for the area. The lot is Zon C2, general commercial. To the north and east are C2 properties developed with various commercial uses. To the west is also a C2 property but is developed with commercial uses and multifamily residential. The commercial use is toward the front closer to Imperial and there are two dwelling units to the back. And to the south are R3O zoned properties developed with eight townhomes. This is what the site current looks like today. At the top left will be or is the remodeled building. On at the right is a building along Lakewood that will be demolished. This is the third building on site which will also be demolished. And this is the current on parking on the site. And on the right-hand side you'll see the trash enclosure. Some background, the total area is 1.58 acres with a total building square footage of 16,480 square feet which roughly 6,000 will be demolished. And the last major renovation to the site occurred in 1970. The lot has also experienced multiple land dedications. Approximately 9,050 square feet has been subtracted from the original lot size with the first dedication dating back to 1964. Recently, in an effort to make the site more functional, the applicant purchased 3,500 square feet from the city through a purchase and sale agreement. That agreement was approved by City Council on February 12th this year. So with the purchase of the land subtracted from the dedications, the total loss of land to date comes out to 5,550 square feet. The application involves a site plan review for the remodel of a 10,473 square foot building and the construction of a new 4,000 square foot restaurant. The proposed FAR is .2. The maximum height proposed is 23 feet. And the landscape for the area totals an amount equal to 20% of the site. And the front setback that they have will be 20 feet and the street side setback that they have will be 22 feet.
Can I just ask a question? So I'm really confused.
Okay.
Did I hear you say they're building townhomes?
No, sorry. To the rear is the R3O zoned property.
And that's the townhomes you said?
There we go. Here, so adjacent and abutting the site will be eight townhomes.
Thank you. Okay, alright, I'm on board now.
Got it. So here's the site plan, outlined in red again is the remodeled building and the blue is the new restaurant. Here's the view of the entrance at the west elevation. The architecture is contemporary. There is a variety of materials. The applicants will use a mix of smooth and sand finish stucco and brick veneer around the entire facade of the building. The smooth stucco is selected for the white and base gray portions of the building. The white being here and here as well and then here as well and the base grays that I mentioned is here. And sand finish will be used for the rest of the areas you see in beige. The brick veneer will also have a smooth finish and will resemble a traditional bright red color. Here is the east elevation. It's a view of Lakewood Boulevard or from Lakewood Boulevard. The materials are the same for this facade although these windows will be frosted. Here are the north and south elevations. The image on top is an elevation on parallel to Imperial Highway and where the pickup window is. And the image on the bottom is the rear elevation. The materials for these elevations match the materials for the previous two elevations. And here are renderings from the street intersection and of the main entrance. Here's an elevation of the remodeled building. The architecture is contemporary as well and many of the materials and features are meant to match the restaurant building. Materials P4 and P2 will be smooth stucco. P4 being here and also over here. In addition, P2 is designed with metal reveals and will mimic a tile design and again, P2 is here. Materials P1 and P3 will have sand finished stucco texture. And then P1 is the top here in white and then the beige across the building. And B1 will have the same smooth traditional brick as the restaurant. And then B1 would be here. This red portion here and the columns there. These features will be accented by a metal canopy that runs the length of the building and black mullions which are the black framing in the window. And here's an artistic rendering of that building. A conditional use permit is required for the outdoor seating which is located here just outside the entrance. And also for a drive-through which would be located here along Lakewood Boulevard. The zoning code calls for a minimum of eight cars within a drive-through. But regardless of the minimum, queuing still remained an interest and concern. And therefore the applicant ultimately proposed 17 vehicles. This number was selected or generated from a queuing analysis. The analysis gathered information from three different Chick-fil-A sites. Downey, Corona, and Rancho Cucamonga. These sites were selected by the applicant because the square footage of each site matched the square footage of the proposed site. Further analysis done by staff found the sites were comparable because the average daily traffic experienced by these locations or the location in Corona is similar to that of Firestone which is our current site and Imperial Highway. Therefore they experienced similar amounts of traffic and potential customers. How this study works is that a transportation engineer stood at the site for a specified amount of time and counted how many vehicles were stacked in the queue at any given moment. That information is then taken and probabilities are generated. Probabilities as in the likelihood that there will be one car in the queue, two cars in the queue, 10 cars in the queue, 25 cars in the queue, so on. Best practice is to design that drive-through based off of the 85th percentile. That 85th percentile came out to 17 vehicles. What it means is that at any given time in the day, there's a 15% chance that the queue will exceed 17 vehicles. Therefore 17 vehicles for this site would be appropriate. Aside from that, the hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. and closed all day Sunday.
Did you say 50% of the time the queue will be greater than 17 vehicles?
There's a 15% chance.
Fifteen or five zero?
Fifteen, one five.
Thank you.
A variance is proposed for the project. The applicant is requesting a deviation from Section 9712. This section is regarding the city's parking standards. The applicant proposes 58 spaces however the lot requires 82 spaces. Currently, the lot holds 83 spaces but all spaces are non-conforming when it comes to appropriate dimensions, fire lane, parking setbacks, and landscaping. Realistically, if they restriped today, only a total of 55 conforming spaces can be accommodated on the site as it stands today which will be three less than what's being proposed. And again, this is the parking situation on site. In order to approve the variance, a hardship must be present. That hardship for this site is the multiple land dedications that were required dating back to 1964 which has resulted in 9,050 square feet of land reduced from the original lot size. This application again is subject to more land dedications of 886 square feet and a total of 4,740 square feet and potential future dedications. This site is also unique because of its irregular shape along Imperial Highway which protrudes out towards Imperial Highway unlike any other property in that corridor. Those pop-outs I'm referring to are located here and then here as well. Which contributes more to the requirement for dedication when it comes to street widening. Its location is also unique because it sits on one of the busiest intersections in the city. Probably dedications not only on one side off of Imperial but also on the other side off of Lakewood. Lastly, the application also involves a subdivision. The area of 1.58 acres is made up of two parcels. This large parcel here and then this smaller parcel that we see here. That smaller parcel is the 3,500 square feet that they purchased from the city. These lots will be merged and split into two.
Why are we splitting them?
So it's part of Chick-fil-A's model to own their own property. So that's why they're the intent of splitting them, right? If I, I'll go on with the presentation. Parcel one will be 37,077 square feet and will hold the remodeled building. Parcel two will be 31,740 square feet and will hold the new restaurant. Regardless, even though there will be two separate parcels, the entire site is designed to function as one. A parking and access agreement will be recorded on both properties much like the situation we have at the current Chick-fil-A site on Firestone. The Development Review Committee met on November 29th, 2018. The Police and Public Works Department had concerns over the stacking of vehicles in the drive-through. Those concerns were alleviated due to the results of the queuing study. A condition of approval was also included to require stacking to remain on-site. From planning, the other concern was noise and the close proximity to residential, the townhomes I mentioned earlier. Any stacking exceeding 17 vehicles is conditioned to be directed towards the parking lot or the parking area parallel to Imperial and furthest away from the rear residential properties. The other concern was noise from the order menu. The volume on the order menu is conditioned to be turned down in the morning and evening hours. Aside from that, no other department expressed concerns over the project and proposed standard conditions of approval. In conclusion, it is staff's opinion that all findings can be made in a positive manner and that ends my presentation. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, sir.
Just for the record, there will be two parcels and in the future that could never be fenced off?
No, no it can never be fenced off. The city is a party to that recorded document and they would need our permission in order to lift that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smithos?
Just a general question, the remodeled building is going to be approximately 10,000 square feet?
10,473.
What's, what's, do we have like a general requirement per thousand? For parking? Is it four or five per parking?
For retail, it would be 250, right? One space for every 250 square feet. For office, it'd be one space for every 300 square feet.
So for this building, what would be the approximate parking requirement just for the remodeled building?
Forty-two.
Commissioner Owens?
Thank you Chair. So Mr. Hernandez, I'm looking at A2 in the entitlements in the middle just as a reference. One driveway in and out of the parcel, the whole site?
No, there are two driveways.
Where am I missing the second one?
Off Imperial.
I see Imperial.
We have the Imperial one here which would be 26 feet wide. And then we have the Lakewood one down here which would be 26 feet wide. This one is access heading southbound only and this one is access heading eastbound only.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, my concern would be a shortcut. You know, someone trying to beat the traffic eastbound Lakewood into the deceleration lane to go southbound. I'm sorry, eastbound Imperial to go southbound Lakewood, cut through. But does give another opportunity to, for a southbound Lakewood travel past Imperial to enter the site, so. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, what sort of mitigation are we looking at? Are we looking at speed bumps? Are we looking at concrete parking restraints? I mean, how would you address that concern?
With the cutting through?
Yes, sir.
It wasn't something that we put a thought into but we can ask the applicants if they're open to putting the speed bumps. Maybe they might oblige. Do you think that'd be a good idea?
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Duarte?
Yes, you know, what's the height of the wall directly south of the building two where the eight townhomes are?
Six feet.
How tall is it?
Six feet.
Six feet? So, you know, my concern looking at that is that now with a drive-through, Chick-fil-A is which is, I think, you know, very busy, popular restaurant and having outside seating and construction. The noise, and I know that was a concern, there, is there any thought in terms of additional barrier or heightening that?
Yeah, on landscaped based, they can definitely go higher than six feet. But landscape, they're conditioned, right, and per our standards required to plant them at a minimum of six feet and grow to a maximum of 15 feet. So when it's fully matured, the whole role of landscaping needs to be 15 feet. So that'd create a buffer.
So and that's currently part of the plan is the landscaping?
Condition on the project and also conditioned to meet the standards for landscaping and which would be holding that buffer there.
So six to 15 feet?
Six at planting and 15 feet at maturity.
I don't see that in here. I don't see landscaping here.
The recommendation or sorry, the condition is for them to meet all landscaping standards and it would be part of our zoning code standards to meet what I just described.
Commissioners, if you reference the same document that Commissioner Owens referenced a second ago, if you go to L1 and you got the conceptual landscape plan, the item that's being discussed at the bottom by the existing wall, you have screening shrubs at the south wall to be a minimum of six feet at time of planting and as Alfonso mentioned, you've got that 15-foot height at maturity. And as Alfonso mentioned also, we've got a condition of approval to assure that as well.
Yeah, I think in the past we've had a description of trees and heights and all that. This just looks like a row of hedges. I think that might be the confusion.
And do we have a description of landscaping in here at one point? I know at L2 there's landscaping as well. Can you help us out with that?
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Duarte?
Well, just to follow up on that. Is landscaping something that the staff feels is sufficient for the noise? I mean, I know that's for the view maybe for the residents but is that, any thought of actually heightening that fence? It seems kind of low at six feet.
On?
On the fence dividing the second building and the eight townhomes.
Well, I should state that currently the situation on the site is that there's a zero-foot setback for one of the current buildings, right? So with the new development, we're moving all the uses a little back further from those residential. So the impacts that they feel now would be alleviated. I think that's an added benefit to the project. I would also say that that building is 130 feet away from the nearby residential. The existing building which is already there is 35 feet away from that residential. The drive-through will be 61 feet away from the residential and the trash closure would be 35 feet away from that residential. Taking that all into consideration, yes, we feel that that it's appropriate.
And also Chairman Dominguez, to answer your question, if you look towards the right corner, the plant palette, we have screening plants and you've got the plant types listed there which we believe are more than appropriate for that section of the development.
Thank you. How many ADA parking spaces is going to be available for the restaurant and then the other commercial building?
They're providing four in total. If I direct you to the screen, there'll be two just outside the entrance of the restaurant and then there are two located over here on the west side closest to the commercial building. So four in total.
Are we now looking to have electronic, electric car charging stations here?
It's not something we took in consideration for the project.
Okay.
I just have additional question I just thought of.
Yeah.
You know, I'm familiar with the area there. The Lakewood, as it stands now, there is an entrance right by the current building where the proposed building is, correct?
Yes.
And that's going to be taken out?
Yes.
And it's going to move more south towards, okay. So it's moving closer to the homes, correct?
Drive-through, yes, you're right. The driveway is moving closer to the homes.
By how much, how many feet, you know?
Yeah, we could gauge it out here.
Cause I think it's here. I think it's here and it's gonna go here.
I would say roughly 190 feet to 200 feet.
200 feet?
Did you catch that Commissioner in terms of the distance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question for you but it slaps my brain here. It's late for me, so thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Reserve the right to bring him back though.
We're here for you.
Thanks. Okay. Before I call the applicant and/or his representative, this will be the time for any Planning Commissioner to disclose any pre-hearing site visits or pre-hearing discussions.
None.
I just know the area well and I go to the tacos baja right now.
Okay.
None.
I have none. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And neither do I. Okay. Will the applicant please come forward to give testimony? Please state your name and address.
Scott Silverberg with Waypoint Development Group, 25 Laurel Horse Drive, Ladera Ranch, California. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commission. Thank you for taking the time to review our project. I want to commend your staff. We didn't jump into this and do this quickly. We spent the last 10 months working on this. They spent a lot of time with us and over the phone and also in person to make sure that we were accurately coming to you guys with a project that was sufficient. So Alfonso and his team have done a great job. We're open for questions. I've got our architect, our traffic engineer, the tenant's architect, tenant's representative here with us as well.
Thank you for coming prepared.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Smithos?
You mentioned traffic engineering. I'm sure you guys are projecting, I don't know if you're expecting a traffic increase but do they adjust anything as far as wait times, traffic signals? Does anything change when this is proposed?
Change in regards to?
With traffic, signals, lighting, wait time, go time?
No, I mean David could probably relay that answer better but as far as in the queue, is that what you're asking?
No, no, on the actual streets.
No, I mean.
Nothing changes.
No, our traffic study was really done more for the queuing. As far as the street goes, the dedication that is part of this project, I believe there's a future dedication for a second right turn lane off of Imperial onto Lakewood.
Okay.
That's probably the only change. My understanding also is that they're gonna try to put a second left turn lane at the intersection to help traffic flow.
And if I can interject, our Public Works Department analyzed that intersection and there's no increases in the level of service based on this development. And the applicant's correct, the Public Works Department, the reason they didn't allow us to sell that entire site to the applicant is we do have improvements. There's an additional left-hand turn lane that's planned for Imperial in front of that site heading eastbound in addition to future additional left-hand turn lanes for the westbound, the southbound, and the northbound sections there.
I'd also like to add that we are buying, I think, 3,500 square feet from the city but we also dedicated a portion of our property for that Public Works dedication.
And that question is because most drive-throughs that are very busy like that, the queue backs up and when it gets very busy you see cars and in this case it would line up on Lakewood Boulevard heading south? I don't know if that affects.
Yeah, right. No, I think in most fast food restaurants, 17-car queue is, you don't see it. So we've kind of gone at the higher end of the queuing section to help mitigate that. And then with property circulation, you know, Chick-fil-A and Jennifer Daw can speak to this more but they've gone, I think they're going countrywide with a new program which is called IPOS. Jennifer, do you want to come up and help explain it? But they're going to the iPad process where they have people actually stand out to keep the queue going faster.
Good evening Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jennifer Daw and I am the Principal Development Lead for Chick-fil-A. I will reiterate what Scott said. Thank you for your time. We've enjoyed working with your staff and we feel that we've come to a conclusion on this wonderful project. And we as Chick-fil-A are excited to have another location here in the city of Downey. So it says something that we really do love your city and we can't wait to serve you our wonderful hospitality food. As Scott said, yes, we have kind of bowled our drive-through. We have been rated to have that gold star standard for drive-through experiences with efficiency, speed, and accuracy. And one of the things that this restaurant will have is our iPad ordering system. So what it is, is that we'll have team members out there and it's kind of like an iPad and they'll take the order with that face-to-face recognition with. recognition with the customer. And we've kind of seen that actually a customer is kind of like that. It's actually having someone out there really having that extra hospitality. We've ran studies that really show that from the time someone places their order with the iPad order taker and they get to the pickup window, it's about 45 seconds and they're off our property. It has shown to actually increase our speed of service quickly. And the 17-car stack is something that we actually have shown, has been proven nationwide, that that's really the sweet spot for us, for 17-car stack. And anything over, it's really, really minimal during like maybe a lunch peak hour on a Friday. But the iPad ordering system is something that all of our restaurants are now having and we'll have team members out there as well.
I think to add to that for your question, there will be staff members out there helping circulate the traffic. Our intent is if it does back up out of the stack to go north onto the property and not back around to Lakewood Boulevard.
Okay. Commissioner Ferretta?
No questions right now.
Commissioner Owens?
Yeah, just on the overall site development, it was brought up car charging. Any reaction to that? If we look to ask for a car charging port here or there, a couple of them, one?
Yeah, environmentally friendly as can be, so we would consider it. We are short handed on parking. So that would take into account of our parking requirements, so.
Got you. Thanks. That's all I have.
Commissioner D'Or?
You know, I just had a question. I'm familiar with the iPad system here on Firestone. I prefer, I think, but just a clarification, is that throughout the day or is that just at peak hours? Yeah, if I can ask.
No problem. So typically, we have it during peak hours. It varies from restaurant to restaurant. Obviously, sometimes we don't like to have our team members out at this time at night for safety concerns. But it varies. Usually, majority of the time it is during our peak hours and our operators kind of assess as well, too. So if they start seeing a lot of cars, they'll be sending out their team members quickly and to help kind of expedite and get the customers through the drive-through.
Okay. Yeah, because my concern was that from maybe nine to 11, the microphone gets a little loud. I think the iPad is a little quieter. Systems.
Nine to 11 at night, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so the cool thing about our speaker system is, because we've been in the neighborhoods that were adjacent to residential communities as well. So the really cool thing about it is when it's really quiet in the mornings from like 6:00 to maybe 9:00 a.m., it's at a lower level and they kind of adjust themselves. They're automatically adjusting with the noise level outside. So we're fine with that condition because our equipment does that automatically.
How about these delivery services? Is there a plan for space for those vehicles, those cars to come in, get an order that I place from my home, you bring DoorDash, whatever it is?
Yeah, so with our Chick-fil-A one mobile app, you know, that's the really cool thing is that you can be at home or near the area. And then once you get to the restaurant, I am here. And we can dedicate sometimes like dedicated spaces for mobile order pickup. People follow it, some people don't. But it at least lets people know, hey, and it sends a signal. So it's like your GPS in your phone kind of transmits a signal to our kitchen to let them know that you're here. And then they'll start preparing your food because you don't want to have the food prepared and you're not there or within that area. You can also go in and we actually have a dedicated mobile area inside the restaurant as well.
For those services to pick up?
Correct.
Okay.
And then just one last question is, I think one of the commissioners previously stated about, you know, maybe somebody on Imperial cutting through on Lakewood, any maybe speed bumps in the parking area just to alleviate that concern?
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Have you addressed that in other corners?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm sure this is not unique. How have you addressed that in other facilities?
Same. I mean, speed bumps typically seem to slow people down. You know, some of our other facilities are bigger. This isn't as big of a site as, say, Grocery Anchorage Center, but we could accommodate that here.
Okay, okay. Can you tell me about the enclosure for the trash?
And specifically, what would you like to know about the enclosures?
What's it look like?
I'll bring up Scott Jones with Architects Orange.
Okay, thanks.
Scott Jones, Architects Orange. It's actually in your packet if you want to take a look at it. It is tied to the architecture of the building, so it is cohesive.
This little rendition?
Sheet A11.
The quarter sheet?
You may recognize it from the promenade at Downey. So the materials, paint colors, it's all tied and cohesive with the building architecture.
So it's totally enclosed, correct? I cannot see trash cans from any part.
It is six-feet-tall wall and it is roofed. There is an air gap below the roof and above the wall.
And I cannot see the trash cans?
You cannot see the trash cans.
Thank you, Scott. I don't have any further questions.
I didn't know they were roofed.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know they were roofed. Explains why Scott's so expensive.
You know, I have one.
There's solar panels on. I didn't tell you that part either.
You know, one for the thing, in terms of that back area with the residents and the townhomes. Because, you know, I think it's going to be a busy restaurant. Chick-fil-A is definitely a favorite for a lot of people. During the construction and after it's built out, there's going to be, you know, there's additional drive-through, there's outside seating. Any, in terms of, you know, I know that there's the landscaping, but in terms of that wall, heightening that wall, is there, you know, something that you'd be amenable to?
I mean, I would want to talk to staff further about that. If they think that the landscape isn't going to be sufficient enough, yeah, I think we would consider it. It is a six-foot block wall and we do have about 120-foot, you know, wide building in front of it as well. But yeah, we would consider.
You have some reservations. What are your reservations? Cost or efficiency or what is it?
Just aesthetics. I think, you know, the way it is right now with the landscaping we're putting in front of it. I mean, cost is, it is what it is on cost. We're doing a redevelopment, you know? I'm not worried about costs. I think we felt that the landscape was sufficient enough for noise. The building is, you know, I think Alfonso said 130 feet away. The outdoor seating is only going to be, I think, two tables and chairs. So it's not significant outdoor seating. And I think Jennifer kind of addressed some of the noise concerns with the drive-through.
So let me piggyback on this. You know, I don't know trees, shrubs, one from the other. So what does this shrubbery look like on the concerned side of that wall?
Do we have, I don't know that we've, it wasn't exactly.
I don't think we have photos of that particular shrubbery, but I would call it a very tall hedge. So it's maybe four feet thick, tall, solid landscaping. In that area in particular, we're pretty tight with the drive, so we've really maxed out the dimension of that landscape planter. So in addition to the building, we have two trash enclosures. And I'd say everything is further from the residential than it is currently. So I'd say it's improved upon from where they are today.
That, excuse me, Scott, that hedge you mentioned, how tall can it get without buckling or swaying?
I'd have to ask my landscape architect to really speak on that specifically, but I think hedges can get, you know, 10 feet tall very easily. Well, I think there's a six-foot block wall, so maybe there's a way to tie it to the wall if you're concerned about a hedge.
Yeah, I think in other applications, we've had actual trees, right? That have come in for noise abatement and for aesthetics, right?
Yeah, there's a variety of options. You know, in our opinion, the hedge is going to absorb quite a bit of noise. And also, being six feet when it's planted is going to help out as well, not only the aesthetic, but the noise. And then that growth to 15 feet is going to keep it sustainable and in place. And so these guys will have a maintenance covenant as well as a condition to make sure that hedge is maintained and that 15-foot maximum is also kept. Because the other thing they want to think about with that are the residents on the other side. And so it would be more aesthetically pleasing to look at green as opposed to look at a wall there. And then the challenge, too, is we don't know how that wall is situated on whose property. It might straddle both property lines and so you're going to have to get agreements with all those different property owners there to adjust that wall. So in our opinion, the hedge meets an aesthetic quality and also buffers the noise.
Would you please not flash lights up here, sir? Excuse me, sir. I think that's a disturbance here, Madam Attorney, flashing lights up here on us. Okay.
You can ask them not to flash the lights. That's fine.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. Has there been any correspondence, either in favor or in opposition?
No correspondence.
Would anyone like to speak either in favor or in opposition of the application?
Good evening, Mr. Dominguez. Yeah. Let us talk about van parking for the disabled. The American Disability Act acquires van parking now. I didn't hear a mention of van parking under Chapter 11 California Building Code. Let alone I did not hear about, or the public has not been informed, that you want to relocate transit bus stops off of Imperial and Lakewood. After all, it's a busy thoroughfare. What do you mean by that thoroughfare? You know, I'm kind of tired. It's kind of late. A little after 9:58, gonna hit 10 o'clock past my bedtime. But you criminals on the permit process sound like someone I know from the city of Los Angeles by the name of Armin Gabe. Armin Gabe worked on the Obama recovery using federal and grant loans. Now I want to know, did the city give Chick-fil-A a loan? Did they or did they not? And when you sell city property, did we get it at top rate market value or did they get a cut? And who took a piece of that cut? Because I understand that, yes, we need to help projects, but helping developers access lucrative package and loans and grants, Mr. Dominguez, creates a problem for me. You see? You see what happens and you keep me here after 10 o'clock, I just get a little ghetto like they did down there off of Crenshaw Boulevard and Obama Boulevard by Herman Wesson Jr., an elected official of the 10th District in LA, 90012, along with Jan Perry. Stealing federal grant loans worth 26.2 million goddamn fucking dollars. So what is this costing the city of Downey, Mr. Dominguez? No, I'm sorry, Dr. Dominguez. Because I cannot fulfill this dream of a vacant lot becoming another promenade issue. See, when I get off the 266 to go to the promenade, the driver, the operator of that bus tells my dumb ass to get off at the front of the bus. Well, I don't sit at the front of the bus. I sit wherever the hell I want because I'm like Rosa Park. I'll sit where I tend to sit and no one's not going to deny me the right to public access. So when you put a goddamn hedge three feet high and you make the public get out to the front, that's discrimination. Because in most stops, you can either get off or the front and the back, Jimmy. Because it prevents me from a safety concern that you addressed earlier during the so-called Circus Circus Act. What about my safety? Why the hell do I have to take the long route instead of getting off on the short route on the 266 to get off to the promenade to go to Lazy Dog? You see, Jimmy? You don't get it. You don't really get it. An unfulfilled dream at the promenade and all we get is a pile of dirt. For how many years of the promenade have been promised, Mr. Dominguez? You were on that issue, Owens, and your electric team failed. You failed to put light on the promenade to get the goddamn businesses rolling. And when I go there and sit there, I feel so sorry because I can't buy shit when the stores are closed. When the stores are not operating. So when 2020 comes, $15 an hour hits the market, you're going to shut down all these goddamn wetback shops because there's no one to work and serve me. Do you not get it? So make good decisions tonight and you will let Chick-fil-A, you will give Chick-fil-A and you will provide them a loan if necessary to complete the jobs for those goddamn demands you want on a speed bump, moron.
How enlightening. Would the applicant like to reveal? Does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Yes. Staff is recommending the planning commission adopt their resolution approving site plan review, conditional use permit variance, and tentative parcel map number 82540.
So the hearing on number PLN-18-00172 is now closed. Commissioners, it's time. Commissioner Spathos.
Oh, I think it's a good-looking project. Looks nice. We're excited to have you again in the city, at least in my opinion. Looks good. Looks good, gentlemen. Good presentation.
Commissioner Ferretta?
Welcome again to the city of Downey. I am looking forward to seeing Chick-fil-A there in that corner and the revitalization of that section of Downey. It really needed a lot of attention and I'm looking forward to seeing the final results. So, thank you.
Commissioner Owens?
As well. Thank you for taking this on and, you know, working diligently through this process and with the city staff. I'd also like to commend them. You know, this looks like a very, very nice project. So welcome.
Vice Chairman Duarte?
You know, who doesn't like chicken sandwiches and waffle fries? You know, my only concern is just the driveway moving back towards closer to the residence, but, you know. Other than that, it's a great project. It's a gate sandwich, so.
Mr. Hernandez, you did a phenomenal job. I really, really like this. It's very thorough. It's well put together and kudos from the applicant on working diligent with them. You know, I think this is a fine example of growth on your part and you're representing the city very well. Thank you. To the applicant, I like Chick-fil-A. I like what you're going to do here with the lot. I like the fact that you're expanding architecturally onto that blighted commercial property. I'm a little concerned, though, and show the concern of my colleague here on noise abatement. I'm also a little bit sensitive about the egress or entry into the parking lot from both Lakewood and Imperial. But I trust that the staff has gone through their city engineering along with yours and there will be no issues. So welcome aboard. I don't see any issues. So at this point, I'd like to call for a motion.
Motion? Second?
So we have a first motion by Ferretta and a second by Spathos. Mary?
Let's get the resolution number.
Resolution number 19-3092.
Okay. Commissioner Ferretta?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Spatopoulos?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And Chair Dominguez?
Aye. It has been moved and seconded to approve and recommend to City Council number PLN-18-0072. The action of the planning commission will be final unless this matter is appealed to City Council with the appropriate fee within the specified time set. The action of the Planning Commission will be final unless this matter is appealed to City Council with the appropriate fee within a specified time set forth in the city's ordinance. Non-agenda public comments. This portion provides an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission on items within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Again, within jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and which is not listed on the agenda. Please state your name.
Jennifer H. Cops is my name for tonight. Jennifer H. Cops. You want my address? I work at Los Angeles 11 North Hill Street, Los Angeles, California, 90012 Central District. So why am I on this topic? Did you not hear about the way the processes permits? Did you not hear about my allegation that Herman Jason Wesson of the 10th District, an elected official with Jan Perry, along with Obama Recovery Funds, were stealing federal and grant loans addressing the public? And these lucrative packages and loans by Mark Gabay? No. I meant Armin Gabay, G-A-B-A-Y. Read it in the LA Times front page. This is why I've been so upset. Because they sent the Threat Management Unit, they sent me a nice little handout in my hand like this one with a TRO because up in Pasadena, California 91101, I was told that my flair for First Amendment was not protected by Terry, the mayor. And Terry, the mayor submitted documents from Pasadena to the City Office of Mike Fewer to put the TMU Threat Management Unit with a TRO temporary restraining order against me and Wayne Spindler because an attorney forgot to remove his private information on the internet. And now I'm a criminal. Now I'm being denied access to a public facility to participate because of a TRO. Isn't that a shame? That the way suppress people from public meetings? Let me read it into the record for my behalf. "May not disclose the address of or describe the protected employee resident. May go though to Los Angeles City Offices to attend council and committee meetings, but must maintain not less than 10 yards." How much is that, 10 yards? "Distance from protected employee." Am I that scary? Do I bring the fear into your heart? No. I am compassionate about the protection of First Amendment. I am passionate about my advocacy to bring together social economic growth for all persons, whether you're disabled or not or elderly, Mr. Owens. But instead, I get riddled Q. Today I was in L.A. at 10 o'clock in the board meeting, Board of Public Works, and a gentleman by the name of Arnold Sachs attacked me as I was here at the podium. Literally scared the fuck out of me. But I couldn't defend myself because I was in fear. Because this man crept up behind me. Scared the fuck out of me, but I could not defend myself because, again, I'm not a threat. I am not a scary person. I simply stepped to the side and said, "Get the fuck away from me, asshole. I got the floor. Kevin James, correct this. Bring the Sergeant of Arms in and remove this gentleman. You cannot suppress public speech. You cannot go grab someone at the podium and take their time off the clock. It's very important." Even Dr. Gonzalez from Kaiser told me that. Become socially, advocate, do your best at these meetings and be careful because the criminals know who you are.
Moving on to consent calendar. Will we'd like to take the consent calendar individually, per item, or in block motion?
Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight of the consent calendar. We don't have a quorum tonight and what we're going to need to ask, somebody's going to have to draw a short straw and read, or excuse me, view the, the video for these minutes. What we have happening here is we have a, a former Planning Commissioner who's no longer with us that participated in the meeting. And Owens was absent, Fermenta wasn't here, Spathos wasn't here, so we're in a little bit of predicament. You guys don't have to decide tonight. We can bring these back at a future meeting. What we can do is we can poll you over the next couple of weeks, decide who wants to watch the video. Whoever volunteers, then we can bring this back for an approval. Absent that, the other items are ready for approval.
I volunteer, Spathos.
No, 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 don't take action. Just, just. We just need one, at least one of you to, to view the video in order to, in order to...
Number eight.
August 15.
August, August 15, and I'll follow up with Commissioner Spathos via email and provide instruction. The remaining items are ready to be voted on.
Very good. So is the desire to go through these individually or do you want to accept these in block? Okay, so I'll do this. I'll say that, I'm making a motion that we adopt numbers five, six and seven and table number eight for a time to be determined.
Yes, we'll, we'll continue to, a date uncertain.
Need a second?
Public comment.
Second.
You need to ask for public comment. Who was first?
What's that now?
Before you take your vote, you need to ask for a public comment.
It's on consent.
Is there a public comment?
Enough. Okay, public comment.
Consent calendar items, public comment. Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for correcting them. PLN-1900055, 2018 General Plan Progress Report. With exception to zoning, which allows owners to use or use of his land, otherwise in a way shall and could be permitted, though not traditional, but not conforming. Then you go into item six, approval of the minutes from June 20, 2018. Then you go into item seven. I, I know it's getting late. It's a little after 10:15 for the record and approval of those minutes, August 1, 2018. I happen to have a draft of those minutes here. August 1. "Report to the City Council of Community Development, Aldo Schindler." And it points out regarding PLN-180084, conditional use permit. And I read into the record, "The Commissioner spoke in favor of the project. However, Chair, Mr. Dominguez, second by Commissioner Fermetta, passed it on a 401 vote. The Commissioner Flores absent to adopt the resolution." Where is Mr. Flores? Okay, I, I think we need to hold this and come back to review the video of this meeting. Because if we can hold approval of the minutes from August 15, 2018, I'm sure we could hold the approval of the minutes dated August 1 in my hand since we don't have Chairman Commissioner Flores available. And in light, again, this is regarding as moved by Commissioner Dominguez and second by Commissioner Fermetta and then by Commissioner Flores to adopt resolution number 183062, thereby approving conditional use permit. As I indicated, zoning exceptions, non-conventional are very difficult. Conditional use permits are extremely difficult. And we have to keep in mind the public's transparency and issues of importance when it comes to difficulties. As like today, when walking into the meeting, that government vehicle out there in the parking lot with G-13 on it, license plate 3590S, could that be an FBI? Could that be an FBI agent looking into these matters? Because I've been stalked by the Los Angeles Police Department. I've been stalked by the city of Los Angeles with a TRO and a TMU because they followed me from a police commission this past Tuesday into City Hall and handed me a TRO in which at that time when I pursued that demand that I show up in the courts immediately upon that response, which I find my due process rights were violated. Because where do you get a TRO with no case number? And why would I not go there and challenge a 1 to 1:30 timeframe before they issue the TRO with stricter restrictions? That's why I can entertain L.A. still because I got spirit. I got God with me. And apparently criminals who believe they can do whatever they want in commissions, believe that they're invisible to the law, remind you, don't fall into the trap. As Mr. Owens pointed out earlier, watch where you step because if you slip, you're going to get caught. Stop the stealing, stop the corruption, stop the abuse. Thank you.
Mary, could you repeat the motion, first and second, please? Do we have, we had a motion, first and second, right? Okay. Mary, making a motion that we adopt content, calendar's items number five, six, seven, and we table number eight for a time to be determined. And we had a second here, I believe.
Second.
Commissioner Owens. We have a rule call, Mary. Thanks.
Commissioner Duarte? Commissioner Fermetta? Commissioner Spatopoulos? Which ones?
Both.
I'll look, point of clarification, is he eligible to vote on any of those?
Mary, I believe he's eligible to vote on the existing minutes in the general plan report, correct?
General plan, but not the minutes.
None of the minutes? Great.
Number eight, I'm reviewing.
No, so can you call out which ones he's, he's not vote on based on his absence?
Commissioner Spatopoulos must abstain from the minutes from June 20, 2018 and August 1, 2018. And I have...
And I have to abstain from the June 20.
Correct. Okay. And we have a vote.
All right, it's probably easier just to take this individually.
No. Now that she's read into the record who needs to abstain, you just follow through with your motion and take the vote, noting those abstentions.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Duarte? Commissioner Fermetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Spatopoulos? Chair Dominguez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any new business or does the, any commissioner have any business to discuss? Commissioner Fermetta?
None.
Commissioner Owens?
None, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Spathos? Vice Chair Duarte? I have none. Does the Director of Community Development have any additional comments?
No comments tonight, Chair.
We are adjourned.